Good morning, it's nine oh four. I'd like to call the Adams County Board of Supervisors, uh, to order. With your invocation. Father, we thank you for another opportunity to meet Lord God. We ask that you allow us to have your presence, Lord God, today and all other days, Lord. We ask that we be able to conduct county business, Lord God. We pray for all our elected officials, Lord God. We pray for all our county employees, Lord God. We ask that you just be with us and help us, Lord God, in our daily lives. We ask that you look out on our families, Lord. And then there, Lord, when it's over, we ask that you meet us in our dining out. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Our prayers of allegiance, our prayers of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, I need the motion to approve of the docket. The docket. It's been promptly moved by Supervisor Wilson. Promptly seconded by Supervisor Milton. Will there be any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Discussion?
I am voting against claim number twenty-seven, twenty-three. Date, gift month, gift date, two thousand and twenty-three.
Alright. Any more discussion? Will there be no discussion? All in favor, vote by using sign of A. Any opponent? Nay, can't have a sign, right. Uh, special presentation.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. We have these scholarships that, uh, we as elected officials created for high school students of the Deirdre, Trent, I mean, AC, and Natutai, and NACCA. I just want to recognize this Brandy Lewis. Could you raise your hand, please? This is our Chancery Clerk, President Warren Gaines. Vice President, uh, Barry, me, uh, Kevin Wilson, uh, prep, I mean, uh, Wes Milton and myself, Ricky Gray. And do we have any elected officials? Well, I see we have Judge right here and we have Eva out here. All of them played a part in helping us with this scholarship because they helped give the money. Now, the first scholarship goes out to Nala Jones. And it's a five hundred dollar scholarship. And she attends NACA, Elected Officials Scholarship. Come on up here. Could y'all come on up here, too? Let me just say something about Nala. I don't know her personally, but I know her mom. And her sister received this scholarship last year. And Nala's getting it this year. So that tells me something great is going on in the Jones family. So, again, Nala, congratulations.
We're gonna buy that property.
And the key to receiving this five hundred dollars, you gotta give all of us some.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah, stay there. And this is her sister that received the one last year. And I think she's going to two of them also, right? The next one goes to Mr. Samuel Merrick. Do they have the school on here? Cathedral?
AC, yes.
Oh, AC, go where they're at. Same thing it gives me in this board. Great pleasure to present this to Samuel. And I don't know where you're going to school or whatever.
Ole Miss.
They're going to Ole Miss, out of town. And again, congratulations and spend that money.
Congratulations.
Brandy, I'm glad you changed because I won't be here no day. Twenty-fifth, hell, on the twenty-fifth, I'll be gone. Thank you for making this arrangements. Y'all can go, y'all can stay.
Alright, we're going. Alright, we're gonna move forward. County business, uh, update request is by all the way.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm wonderful, thanks for asking. Um, I would like to start off by, uh, thanking Supervisor Gaines for his job well done. When I asked about the dirt whatever, uh, it was done the next couple of days. And I also thank him for cutting our grass on the, uh, if you will, easy. For most of us at Three Tartox Drive, we cut our own. But where there's no home, then there's one or two passing left. So he did take care of that and we thank him. I'm gonna thank him on behalf of the little neighborhood. Because I am the one, for twenty-three years, have kept Tartox Drive and Davis Court clean. And it's one of the cleanest neighborhoods out there. And I just wanted to thank him for that. So, uh, moving on, Supervisor Gaines, do you have anything on me with the sanitation bill to follow up? That's why I asked him here. And, uh, but I dropped my card along the way and I went back to find it, but I couldn't, but I know what's on it. Do you remember?
I remember, uh, yeah, we're getting an update. Just got an update, yeah, on our sanitation. I know we've been busy.
Okay.
We've been busy, and I know. I, I, I don't think so, ma'am. Uh, we've been busy, but I can promise you, if you just give me today, tomorrow, we'll, we'll get you, uh, we'll get you an ass about Wednesday.
As long as you get rectified.
Yes, right.
Even if I have to keep coming and reminding you.
Yes, right.
Your plate is full and I respect that.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a backlog everywhere.
Yes, ma'am. We'll take care of it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We'll, we'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay, okay.
We'll look at it.
Now, I'd like to piggyback a little bit to the attorney. Uh, I wasn't sure because I was overshadowed by, by shouting at me. Uh, so will you repeat what you said about, do you remember the question?
I'm sorry, no, ma'am.
Uh, what I was asking about the changing of the plaque? And I was in the wrong place, so you don't remember the, I didn't hear you number bits and pieces because I was being shouted over.
If you could remind me, you know, to ask your question, I can give you the answer.
Okay. I was asking why was my plaque changed? Am I, do I have permission to ask that question in here? I just want to be clear because I'm never disrespectful.
If, if, if that what we, uh, talking about, the updated with the, uh, tax assessor? They updated the map, is that, is that a matter of fact?
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask why your tax map was changed.
Yes.
I can ask the tax assessor's office if the maps can change and.
Well, it has been, trust me. Because I'm a person, like I said before, I'm a person of order. And I have been tracking it ever since. But when I saw that right up in the paper, a good white bag about to be zoned in, I said, okay, this pointed at me. In the world, because it's the spirit in me. And it was been shown to be that. But anyway, anyway, moving on and no offense to anyone. But I remember Supervisor Gaines, when you got, when you sent me to office, I called you and asked you to come out because that was problem. Four years plus. And Supervisor Gray came with you. And his word was, and correct me if I'm wrong, oh, I gave him the plaque that was highlighted to me, for me, brother, from the tax assessor here. And Supervisor Gray said, oh, I see what she talking about. We supposed to put this back just like it was.
Okay, so your plaque, the name on the plaque changed?
No, no, no.
I'm asking, the tax map, the name on the tax map changed? Or the tax map itself, the boundaries of the tax map changed?
The boundaries, I understand well, the boundaries has changed.
Okay, good, so you're.
And my acreage has changed.
So your, your acres or whatever, your, your, uh, tax map is what the tax assessors required to do to help them assess the property, to help them to get a true value for the tax purposes. It is something that specifically is not something that actually means how much acreage you do or don't have. That, that depends on what your legal description will state. That'll depend on an actual survey. A tax map has not been placed of a survey. It is simply a tool that tax assessors have to use by law to help give you a true value on your property. If you feel like you have more acreage that you need to be assessed taxes on, then when we go to the tax assessor will file your taxes, it'll have acreage set. And if you disagree, that's when you can object to it and say, I have more acreage. Of course, that means probably you might incur more tax liability depending on your situation. So the tax map really is just a tool that the assessor uses to try to get a true value for tax purposes. I do use it, you know, as best I can to kind of, you know, find out what property is here, there, or whatever. I'm guilty of that. But I know by law, that doesn't actually mean what your meets and bounds is. Your meets and bounds is what is set on a deed and what an actual surveyor does, a tip and pay due. And so sometimes and oftentimes, your tax assessor map will be different than what an actual survey will be done. And if you go log on to your system, it actually says that you cannot rely on tax maps to, for, for boundaries. You have to get your own survey and use your own meets and bounds.
Okay, now, having said that, I disagree with you, but I respect you. And, yeah, and furthermore, let me give you a little history. I, my husband and I acquired a lawn from USDA in nineteen seventy-six. That was six years after I, we graduated from high school, we built a home. Uh, the full line came through. I decided to relocate here to what's the only I could have did in my life. Okay? And I know a whole lot about what you just said. But I respect you, but I just don't agree with you.
Okay.
And, and, and just like I said, now, and another thing, that's very naive. Because, uh, with me paying anywhere from eight to twelve hundred dollars a year taxes, and then, but you can take my money for this property, which said da-da-da-da-da. And now, at the end of the day, it's like, no, uh-uh, you can't do that. But the thing of this, God had me smarter than that. Six years ago, I paid five hundred dollars for an appraisal. And according to the law, there, it states that if you want to sell the property dispute, this is according to the law. If you want to sell a property dispute, get an appraisal. But God had already prepared me for that. And then not only that, two thousand and five, there's a problem with the back line. And it was ruled on by the judge. So we cannot disrespect, or we have to go by the judge's rule and the order. We have to do that, that's a must.
I definitely agree with that.
That's a must. But then somewhere, somebody's missing something. So I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna leave that alone because I know you got things to do and, and whatever other than me. But one more thing, I was told that, and I don't appreciate, let me say this, I don't appreciate nobody yelling at me in a setting anyway, you just don't do it. And I just walked out, I apologize, because I'm big enough. That's something I don't do. I, I, I just don't do that. I don't know who you think I am. But then, I mean, I don't, I don't even know if you, seem like everybody here has a problem with me. But it's your problem, it's not mine. But if you want to come to me and talk about it, we can talk about it. Because the Bible says what you need to do. You don't need to go to court. He said you need to sit down and discuss it. Yeah, I shouted out of here and I walked out and I apologized. So I'm gonna ask this question. Uh, where do you go? With a, if you have a concern, because I was told that we ain't here to take care of this. If you want to do this, go to the tax assessor's office in there. I wouldn't go to the sheriff's office if I had to, I've been locked up too many times for nothing. And then another, one more thing, I would just, uh, kind of want some guidance to sit the sheriff and his department here. Tell the rotator, my rotator cup, I was trying to get some consent and almost asked him to be removed from the office. I'm gonna just tell you like it is, because who is he? I did nothing. And it's against, you cannot, you cannot charge nobody for when you in a property dispute. How many two hundred dollars I paying? But I told the attorney the other day, and I'm gonna sit, I'm gonna go. Uh, my daughter, she just an image of her mother, which is me, the poster shop, she's the owner. She came in and set it up and she left. She let her brother operate because she don't want to be here because of how people treat you. And she don't even like how you treating her mother, because they know their mother. And just to think, you know, just for people to do me like this, do you know what impact this have on my children? Do you not know? Or you don't, uh-uh, you don't care? You rather take it and fuck up twenty feet of my property. You rather, but I, I told you, that more harm will go. And I mean it from my heart because I'm right and I know I'm right. I'm not sneering about stupid, not by long shot. And another thing, I'm a no nonsense person and I know I am. So I'm not gonna deny, not at all. But I do know this, I don't think nobody would appreciate nobody yelling at their mother. And I'm a senior citizen in case you can't take it. And I lost a teeth by body service. So I have, I have an appointment Thursday to go back and get it. I had appointment for today, but I knew I had to come here. Because, you know, there's some things we don't do. We need to respect the law and order. Because if we do not, why should you have a law? So somebody better get it right. And I'm serious.
Mr. Wells, please. What, what we'll do, like I said, I'm, I'm, I apologize that, that somebody, but what we really would want to do is try to put, put you in the right places to get the right thing, you know, done. That's just like what we deal with, uh, tax assessor, he's an elected official, he has an.
Know what he told me, not because you are. I went over there just to get an appointment with him. He's sitting there talking about something. I don't know, I don't know what to do, that's all the time. But I went because I was directed on that, because I know him well enough. And I don't even have to know him, I just went to get an appointment with him, never gave him one. Then at the first time.
Well, I, I, I would personally call Mr. Hughes myself, ma'am, and ask if he would give you an appointment because he does the tax math and stuff like that. I would personally do that, I would do that today.
Thank you, sir, and thank you all, enjoy your day.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Alright.
I'll do it, I'll take care of it.
Okay, you take care. Okay, alright. Uh, Waldroff, uh, the lease request for IP property?
Welcome, everybody. I'm glad that this is my first time to be at a supervisor's meeting. And my name is Robert Waldroff and I oversee approximately three thousand acres on Carthood Point Road. And as y'all know, the river cools up and down. And I've been trying to find a place to buy or lease, to park our tractors, our bushhogs, our dents, our vehicles and our, you know, everything it goes with a hunting camp. And I've been driving down below this paper mill for the last fifteen years. And I keep seeing this parking lot right there, it'd be the ideal spot. And I think I talked to Robbie Dollar, I believe it was. And he told me to call Mr. Clover, and I called Mr. Clover. And that's the reason I'm here today. And if y'all can work with me, I see where the county got a grant to redo Carthood Point Road. And I've got the okay from the two doctors I work for to give you all the sand and gravel y'all possibly could use in your lifetime to redo that road. And I'm just waiting on, see what's on the site.
Alright, uh, Mr. Dawson.
Where is the gravel at? Where's the gravel at?
It's on, uh, right there at the north end of the Natutai. There's about two hundred and fifty acres there.
You do have some gravel on the side?
It is, with all the request, the doctor said, you don't dig a hole, you can scrape all you want and redo the ramp, go down to the deer season. When the river's down, we drive across that sandbar.
Yes.
And when the river's up, we boat across. But, uh, there's plenty of water gravel, plenty of sand. And Robert Johnson, that's where y'all used to get your sand from. And he got his land in CPR right now and you can't touch it.
Correct.
So I'm just leaving that option to y'all, see however y'all want to do it.
Mr. Dunn, you talked with him?
I've talked with him and, you know, if anyone wants to lease property, they gotta come and discuss, you know, this with the board of supervisors and, you know, that kind of thing.
Alright, I'll go to the end of board, does anybody have any question?
Uh, did you determine that parking lot that was on those?
I'm really unsure what exactly which parking lot he's talking about.
You know where the old credit union building is there? Credit management, it's the old Zachary or old construction parking lot, it is part of the IP property.
Yeah, there's only a small section that's not on there.
So.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So, uh, if him is correct, he wanted to lease part of IP?
He want to lease that parking lot area here. Uh, Mr. Gray, if you go past where the Mississippi State extension office building is, right past it, it's another brick building which used to be the old credit union. Uh, Mr. Atkins owns that now, that's all the park is out of the IP property. Right beyond that, it's a little parking lot, a construction. And boys used to park and fence in with six foot side lawn or wherever, fence is, uh, probably two acres maybe, I hadn't really looked at it out of my mouth, or might be a little mow or something, but probably a couple acres of gravel, parking lot and, you know, fence in, I think that's the area.
We've been, we've been cutting over the years.
It really doesn't, it's a crazy thing growing up, nothing to cut. I mean, you know, what I'm saying, the gravel, but, you know, it's an area that we're not used to at the moment.
Okay, so we're actually doing a lease, or we doing a lease in lieu of?
We're not doing anything at the moment, haven't done anything at the moment. He just called me and I told him he need to talk to the slow, come to the board to, to see if the board be, be interested in doing something like that.
So my question is this, is that property part of anything, uh, in the future that Chandler or whoever have, would that be a piece of property? Do we know that?
Don't know that, I can certainly.
Well, could we have Chandler at the table, too?
Sure.
Because I would even want to say, yeah, we gonna lease this to him. Then all of a sudden Chandler say, well, that's part of something that I, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, any, any college will have to say, but in case we sell, you know, then, then that, that makes me always, but, yeah. Unless whoever purchased it would underdo that.
I, I, I think, Mr. Walter, I think there's something that, that is doable. Uh, but I think we got a few more, uh, people that's not at the table right now that we just want to make sure. Because we are definitely trying to, uh, develop IP property and, uh, draw some, uh, businesses in. And so, uh, we, I, I'm gonna speak for this part and everybody else speak. I don't think it's, uh, that we saying no, but I'm thinking we gonna let the attorney check and he can give it to you and check with Chandler Russ and make sure that that part of the property is not a part of the property he's trying to do business on right now.
I understand, I agree.
And he can, and once he gives a challenge, you have his contact information?
I do, and he's got my contact information, too.
And, and if y'all will stay in contact, uh, I mean, once we find that out, uh, I, I, I think we can, we probably can make something work out.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask Chandler today, that'll make you go back to me today, but I'll talk to Chandler today. So we'll get together sometime this week.
Lease, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
And y'all just want to park tractors and what have you all back there in hot water?
I've got two tractors, two bushhogs, eight, ten foot dents. And a boat, a boat and trailer and a carload trailer, twelve foot, I think, and another twelve foot utility trailer. And where I've been parking, I've been parking that, Carl Christopher. But the D and C Oldfield, they fixed it in larger pipe yard and I gotta get it all off. So he gave him enough time.
Is it out there now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And he gave him enough time to find out what I need to do. And my other option is if y'all don't leave it to me, I've got to build a mound. And, and that's gonna cost anywhere from thirty to forty thousand dollars to the ballpark figure. And, and if you build a mound, what if we have a flood like we had in two thousand and eleven? You don't know if you got it high enough. And if you get everything on top of the mound and the river comes up, you can't get to it, you just gotta let it go under. And I know two doctors that would not be very happy over that. But, you know, that's life, we have to accept and keep going.
Right, well, um, then that's the trying to get, with together, uh, get together with Chandler and, and he'll, he'll give you a call back.
Alright, appreciate it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Thankful for your, their offer of sand and gravel and that, that helped the county.
That, that option still goes if y'all don't leave to the water.
Yes, thank you.
We appreciate that. Alright, uh, Mr. Jimmy Weller, Recreation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I guess I'm here to give you an update because we have to came to, uh, conclude, you know. We got, uh, eight lifeguards that certified over weekend, four of them, we certified, four we certified. Costs twenty-five, two twenty-five, usually when I would, when you, the ones that stay with us, we would, uh, actually pay so we're gonna actually, eventually once they get in the system, reimburse them because four of them is actually do the training for swim lessons. And, uh, three of them been with me three years and one been with me two years, so they are, they stayed in the system with us. Uh, swim lesson starts on June the fifth, the cost is sixty dollars. Uh, you from eight AM to twelve AM, each twenty, the hour section. Uh, we have a lot of people that actually will start. Carthood, we have, we'll start asking for sponsors like we did all the time, so that actually going board, uh, we have water aerobics starting on maybe the twenty-fifth, which is Thursday for Memorial Day weekend, uh, from seven to eight. We used to split the gate with the guy, but this year, if he come down, he want to pay into his coupling, which would be two and a half a week, and then usually we have anywhere from ten to fifteen liters of water. So we would just put that into the pot so it should reimburse itself if we going for the cat. Uh, right now, pool hours is set up for Saturday, the twenty-seventh, from one to six Sunday. The next day is Sunday, from two to six in Memorial Day, one to six. And then we give them Tuesday and Wednesday, often they will go back to regular session. Usually it was closed on Monday and Tuesday, but on Tuesday, we always still do water aerobics later afternoon. Uh, right now, I got the Sheriff Department, got the inmates company in Wednesday and Thursday of this week. They gonna wash down all the chairs and pressure wash the deck like they did last year and get ready for open. So we already got all that set up. Uh, so I'm just giving you an update of where we at, unless you all have some changes or something different to do.
Well, we have been trying to set up this meeting and I, I think was scared of a conflict with people in and out of town, stuff like that. So the meeting had not, uh, took place yet. Uh, and I, I know we definitely gonna have to have a pool of, pool of assets to Adams County. You know, that's, that's a big asset to the citizens and I, I guess, I mean, I'm just gonna speak out there, I speak for themselves. Uh, until we get things worked out, we do not need to, uh, allow, cut the public, make the public suffer for, uh, not having our business worked out. So, uh, and I'm open to any other supervisor that have anything to say. Yeah, alright, well, alright, Mr. Weller, we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, we gonna move right along with city government business if any. And the city government? Alright, I'm gonna move on to departmental reports.
Hey. I don't know really how to do this, this is my first time for this. The Jeep broke down.
And they're calling it a, uh, throttle body and gasket problem. And we don't, evidently, we don't have the money in our budget, from what I understand, from Mr. Hughes. It's gonna be eleven hundred and twenty-four dollars to get it fixed. It broke down at his house, and he called the wreck, and they took it over to the Jeep place, over on sixty-one, so.
All right, I'm gonna request, Mr. Brown?
It's not in the budget, that's why I requested that the tax assessor, um, office come and make the question, or, or wants to actual increase, um, there is a law that we're up there for, here's the dollars.
Three seventeen eighty-nine.
In that line item, so it's like an increase of eight hundred and six dollars and twenty-eight cents for that one item.
Well, you gotta have a Jeep fix, I mean, most people, me, I mean, that's a, that's transportation, so, uh-
But we all use it.
Uh, uh, yeah, so it's something that's usable, and it's using, so, uh, I'm gonna open the door, what's the plan there, the board?
Yeah, be done.
Yeah, they'll make a motion, then, but-
All right, well, it's been, uh, a motion has been made by Supervisor Wilson to amend the budget, has been seconded by Supervisor Gray, and discussion, if there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you, and sign a I. Interpose, may they have the same right, thank you.
Thank you, I, I'll put some more money on there for y'all.
And if you would, if you would, Miss Peggy, could you talk to there and, and make sure that he get, uh, uh, form a settlement as well?
Yes, sir, I just talked to her, I'm gonna call her and set it up.
Okay, and, and I appreciate that.
I, I, I'll take care of it.
Does she have a survey?
And she has, she has a good complaint.
Oh.
She, and, and this, this has been going over the years, so she has a good complaint.
So you took part of the property?
The neighbor did.
Oh, well.
And the neighbor's calling and getting her arrested all the time.
She has a good solid survey.
Yes, they get a survey for it, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Uh, Nick, Mr. Richard, would, would you, uh, I know I asked him to come out, over there?
Morning, Mr. President's advisor, I'm just giving you a little update on the airport, we're extremely busy. We got three construction properties going on at the same time out at the airport right now. Um, so it's kinda got me going every which way. Um, I do apologize, I haven't been here sooner, but it's just bad. Um, the FAA has come and made two visits, um, they were here last week on Thursday to look at the, uh, park. Um, they have given me some more guidance on moving forward, so my commission meeting will be Thursday. Uh, my recommendation to the board is going to amend the, the, uh, lease that we have with them until we get further information from the FAA on what we need to do to move forward on that. Um, but right now, the first thing they said is I have to have an appraisal done and sent to them immediately, so I'm working on that right now. Um, other than that, I could give, ask any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
That's on the lake itself?
Yes, on the park lease over there.
What do they want appraisal for?
Um, they wanted, they said that the park lease was not approved by the FAA in a long time, ten years ago, when it was actually signed up, and they said it has to be done at fair market value. Um, they do, they require that, and it wasn't approved by them the first time. So they want an appraisal on the property for fair market value right now. They said that they may amend some of that, but at the moment, that's the first step, is get the appraisal done.
Has anybody been paying the lease out there?
They have not made any payments on that. However, they did make some improvements to the area that will compensate for the payments that they didn't make. So that it will offset that, I believe, in the FAA's eyes, but in moving forward, it will have to be at fair market value from what I'm being told.
Did it put that in writing?
Yeah, I got an email on it, I'll forward it to you.
Email it.
All right, okay, well, yeah, and, uh, I thank you, uh, Mr. Nelson, you know, and I know y'all bid that idea, but it's just good, every now and then, you know, we don't require you to come every month, but every couple months, you know, airport is a hot topic, and, uh, I know we doing a lot of great things, but we're working hard trying to get it open, so, you know, uh, I'm not gonna ask you to come every month, but if you give us a point of the update, 'cause I know everybody, the people in the cameras are excited about it, and they likes to know. And so, you know, we appreciate the work that you're doing, uh, and I actually continue it. But every now and then, I mean, I know you are answering the phone, but just so the public can have an update, that'd be fine.
Well, the, you know, talking with the airlines, we're, we're still negotiating. We actually got a new player involved with Sky West now, so we even got more airlines talking, so it's still a process, and it's a slow process, and, uh, everybody needs to understand it. It is a slow process, but it is moving forward.
It is moving forward, and I appreciate Mr. Gray.
Uh, I guess, wanna add on to what President Gaines said, one thing I'm saying, I would like to see is, uh, a lot of stuff be printed about the airport. Me personally, I'd rather for it to come from you, since you are the director, and, uh, uh, if it comes from you, then I know it's correct. When it comes from somewhere else, I don't know where that's coming from. So my thing is, if, if something good happened to the, uh, uh, to the airport, either you can relate it to the president, and the president can relate it to us, 'cause I don't like it coming from somewhere else, and I, I don't even know what is true or not.
Well, and some of the things that you hear, I don't know are true or not either.
That's the reason I'm gonna hear from you.
You don't wanna hear the bad news? You just said you wanna hear the good.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm one hundred percent positive in two thousand twenty, twenty-three.
Yeah, okay, but, him, him, uh, all right, well, I-
I just appreciate your hard work out there, Richard Dunn, uh-huh.
I appreciate that, yeah.
We don't hear any bad things out there, 'cause that, that board's done a good job out there. I'm trying, you know, you got one of your board members here, Brian.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all for letting me build for the airport.
If y'all need anything, let me know.
All right, no. Sorry, I cut you off.
No problem, good morning. My name is Danae Price, and I'm the purchase clerk for Adams County. Um, first, I would like to, uh, give you an update that we received the last order of the volunteer firefighter material. Okay, and secondly, we did have a bid last Friday on May twelfth for Chester, Willis Field, and we received one bid, and it was one million nine hundred and three dollars and five hundred and twenty-four cent. And, uh, Joseph Fur is supposed to be calling in, um, oh, there you go, see that, I think you said, give us something up there, he's gonna elaborate on that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Joseph Fur, I'm the design professional record for the, the bid package that we put out. Um, we had, um, uh, very little interest in this job, uh, from contractors. We, uh, I think it's just because of the, the nature of the work, being artificial turf requires, you know, a lot of times, out of town contractors to do it, was the major subcontractor. Um, and we had a pre-bid conference, we had no one show to the pre-bid conference, we did have, um, we did have, we had made some calls to some field builders, but the, the bottom line is, uh, we ended up with one bidder. We had another company that was planning to bid until right before the project, uh, and, um, they, they pulled out, uh, right before the project, uh, bid, so that's the bad news. And, and, and the bad news is it, is the project is over our, our budget considerably, but we have, the good news is, the, the contractor that did bid it, and the turf contractor, the turf, turf subcontractor that bid it, both are, are good companies, uh, and they're both willing to, uh, work with us to get the project, uh, down into a, uh, a better number. We've already identified, um, about twenty to thirty percent of that, no, maybe twenty percent of that number in items that they put in their bids, because they were unsure of the, uh, of what we were going to require, because they got the bid document, they got into the bid documents late. Uh, so, since we only have one bidder, and we have a bidder that we, that we like, uh, contractors that, that we, you know, have good reputations and, and so forth, and they're willing to work with it, uh, my recommendation is that we, we take the, that as, as a, the ability to, uh, negotiate a value engineered solution to, to this, this project, to bring this down into a better scope. Uh, I think it also gives us the opportunity to look at, um, look, look at, uh, the second phases of the work, the, the renovation of the stadium, and the parking lot, and the restrooms, uh, in order to figure out a better idea of what that's gonna cost right now, uh, because we can deal with this general contractor and maybe get some preliminary pricing on that, so we can basically right-size the project for your budget. Um, we don't know yet exactly what, uh, you know, what the, the, the number for this bid can be. Um, I'm gonna, I'm scheduled to meet with, um, with Stubbs, uh, after this meeting and start doing it. We've already had multiple conversations with both subcontractor and the general contractor. Um, so what I guess I'm, I'm requesting is that we, uh, take these bids under advisement, give us a, a, a few weeks to, um, to, um, look at the numbers, look at what this value engineering could be, uh, and then come back to you, uh, either at the next board meeting, or possibly the following board meeting after that, with a, with a better number. One, one item to note that, that we had talked about before, we bid this project, um, and, uh, we, we bid it as having the outfield sprigged with grass. Sprigging requires a, uh, an eight-week grow-in period. The contractor that bid it said that they, they would, did not want to bid it, they, that they stipulated they were going to sod the outfield as part of their number. So our, our grow-in time goes away if we accept that option. And at this point, I think we need to accept that option, because the delta between their sprigging number and the sodding number was not that great. Uh, and if we are to sprig it, they maintain, they maintain it as per the specs for about three weeks, but then you have to take over that maintenance, and there's fertilizer costs and, and labor costs involved with that, whereas the, the sod is a much easier, uh, transition. We can, we can do that sodding pretty much anytime, and then have that, the field will certainly be ready to play in February. So my recommendation is to, uh, give us a couple of weeks to try to, to, to do this, and then we'll get back on your agenda either on the fifth or the, I guess, the next one is.
All right, well, you heard the recommendation of Mr. Gray.
That, Mr. President, before we, uh, stop making motion, I got one question. legally, can we do what he's saying we're gonna be here?
That's something I already wrote down on my notes, they, I was told by Supervisor Middleton that they had talked to Tom Chain from Audit before and got that permission, but I have already written down, have Tom Chain.
Is it in writing?
I already have written down to talk to Tom Chain myself and find out what it is, but-
I was here, I was here Friday for bid opening, and Miss Martin did like to phone call and say, oh, they did talk.
I did talk to Tom, Tom Chain, and he said, as long as there's only one, one bid, we can, um, as long as there is no deviation from the actual specs of the project, then you can discuss lower, you know, price adjustments as far as lowering the project, he did say that. He said normally, if it's more than one bid, you can only do an adjustment of ten percent. But he said as long as it's only one, you can discuss altering the price of the project, as long as it doesn't, uh, affect the actual specs of the project, what, you know, what you put out as far as what needs to be done.
And I trust, I trust, but there, uh, that's what I did, at the moment, they're just asking to take it under advisement, Rick, there's nothing to leave about that, but I will have that answer for you as well, I trust.
Well, yeah, it's fine. Yeah, that's a paper trail.
Yeah.
I, I'm gonna find out the law on it, too.
Thank you.
And, and one other thing, the contractor i- is required by the bid to hold his bids for at least thirty days, uh, so, you know, we can, we, we can, and, and, and we can come back and, and accept or reject this bid, you know, later, i- if, if we can't come to an agreement.
See, right, it makes a lot of sense that it would be what they're saying, because the reason you don't, you know, change prices if there's multiple bidders, is 'cause it gives you competitive advantage, right? So since there's one, you're no competitive advantage, makes sense, I just, I know, and I believe it, I'm just gonna find out for myself.
I'm making mention that we take this under advisement, uh, value engineering is done, and bring this back before the board, hopefully by the fifth.
Right.
Which will be for a week.
All right, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Nelson, properly seconded by Supervisor Gray, that we take it under advisement, will there be any more discussion? If there be mo- no more discussion, all in favor vote by you, and sign a I. Interpose, may they have the same right, vote for Karen, uh, thank you.
I do have one thing, my name is, oh, Miss Martin, I'm the control for Adams County. Um, we previously worked with, uh, Lynette with, uh, with our FEMA grant to get reimbursed for the, uh, their CBA's and the, uh, training equipment. They, they did notify Ms. West that we do have money remaining, remaining, uh, nineteen hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-four cents plus that five percent match that the board approved, uh, a few months back. Um, we have gotten, uh, both amounts that we've put, she's put in for, we have gotten that money back, and that was over ninety thousand dollars, but we do have money left, and he said, um, the gentleman that she's been speaking with basically said they would want us to use it versus sending free money back. Um, they did, they were able to find the camera through EEP, uh, it's an amount of three thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars. It's a thermal imaging, um, kit for the volunteer firefighters, so that would only be like eleven hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixteen cents that the board would have to cover, which is still falls in that five percent approval from prior. So I was trying to, um, see if, you know, if you wanted to approve that purchase of the imaging kit for the volunteer firefighters to use the remainder of the FEMA grant.
All right, well, you heard your, uh, is that in the form of a request? Is that in the form of a request?
Yes, sir, I'm requesting approval.
You, you, you heard the request?
Don't send no money back. Uh, fine, eleven hundred and sixteen dollars will make it work.
All right, it has been moved by Supervisor Gray, having seconded, they're properly seconded by Supervisor Lewis. Uh, will there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by you, and sign a I. Interpose, may they have the same right, thank you, anything else?
Um, with the, the paneling and everything for Kingston, I probably did, did talk to him, um, he's speaking with his engineers, because all, everything will be custom, and he said that he'll fix the sound problem.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, he told us, he, he told me, once he gets everything, find out, I will have all the information, every step of the way, as, as far as, um, when they'll ship out, and need it delivered, and everything like that.
Okay.
And I, I, I need to see you sometime-
Okay.
For the weekend.
Okay.
All right, come Friday, all right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, next, departmental report?
And it says with Adams email on dispatch. And these are the reports for the, starting May the first up until today, for the Adams County Sheriff Department. We had two hundred and fifty-seven, uh, Natchez Fire Department. The, the Natchez Police Department had four and eighty-two, the Natchez Fire Department had fifteen to five being in the camp. Also, I'm asking for a request for travel for a Jane, uh, Kohizer and a Padilla Johnson for June the fifteenth through the sixteenth to Ken for orientation, sixteen hour orientation class.
Yeah, I, I don't know what to get, I see, I see the Disha Johnson.
Yeah, both of them were together, uh, Padilla and Johnson, should be two separate sheets, I mean, they're probably stuck together.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
I do have, uh, you heard the request, uh, email on one direction, can I get a motion? Been properly moved by Supervisor, um, Ray, and properly seconded by Supervisor Lewis.
Also, I'm requesting a re-
Oh, oh, oh.
You can do it inside, Mr. Smith, I'm gonna send you the correct form up to use.
All right, but if there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by you, and sign a I. Interpose, may they have the same right. All right, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Okay, I'm requesting a rehire obtainance brand for our time.
All right, uh- All right, uh. Anne Brown, I do have, uh, paperwork having been signed. Anne Brown, she just communicated at twelve sixteen hour, uh, thirteen thousand one hundred four hanging. Uh, can I get a motion?
No move.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray.
Sir.
And properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson that we, uh, rehire Anne Brown at the request of E-911 direct. Any discussion?
I have some discussion.
Yeah.
What was the reason that they left?
For Tangerance. He's still working for the loss prevention.
Okay, so there was no.
Yeah, he's available for rehire.
Okay.
We'll verify that. Separated without.
We have that issue there. We'll verify.
All right. Well, if there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using sign "I." Any opposed? May they have the same right. Motion carried.
That's all I have.
That's all you have. Thank you, Ms. Phil.
Ms. Phil, so we're trying to meet on Mon, next Monday when we're meeting with the city. We're trying to conclude that.
Okay. All right, just send me an email.
Okay. Well, I thought I'd catch you, but I'll make sure.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, he's about a week.
All right. Next apartment report.
Good morning. Uh, we have the emergency management. The sirens on Lowell Road and COVIDell, we have it up and it's working. We got the motor in and it does work. I know the last time we had to brush them in and then, 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 uh, so we had to order sirens and motor. So we got it up and going. Uh.
Thank you, Mr..
And Brad told, let y'all know that he's doing fine. We didn't know his sister passed away last week, his older sister. So he said he's doing good on that. Uh, as far as fire, all the gear is in. As far as the grant, SCBA, all that is in, the gear, the board, board, the turnout gear. And that's all in from last week is being in. We appreciate y'all help on that.
Thank you.
All right, uh, now we've been trying to find people, you know, we talked about the fire truck donating whatever we can to get a spare truck in until, you know, we can purchase a new one or get a grant for it. The grant's closed right now. But, uh, we had a chief from West Point, Arkansas, Donald Short, said they would donate a fire truck to us. It's an older truck, but they said they donated to us. But then he said, "Donate, he'll give it to us." Title and all that go with it. And like I said, so what we're gonna do is request to go look at it this weekend to see if, you know, could we use it. You know, if we can, if jobs that we can get, put in the service, you know, go look at it. If everything works, bring it back. Put it out there on the road until we can take care of that situation with the other truck.
All right, well, I don't see a problem with somebody to make sure they donate you a fire truck. So, um, you heard the request of Mr. Smith, five four minutes. Can I get a motion?
Okay.
He's gonna go look at it.
That's a question.
No, he don't question it. Go look at the truck and they're gonna give him the truck.
Right.
Permission for travel.
Permission for travel.
Okay.
So, and then properly moved by Supervisor Milton, properly seconded by Supervisor, uh, Gray, giving permission to go look at the truck and what park is that?
West Point.
West Point, Arkansas. So in that motion, do we need to include, uh, bringing it back if, huh? Cause he said he's gonna look at it and then.
Yeah, if everything works out, it's doing.
If everything works, they're gonna bring it back. So we need to make sure if it's, I mean, I just wanna make the motion clear enough. And they look at it, they're gonna give it to them. So we approve the travel, but approve also the acceptance.
Yeah, we can bring it back and then we'll, if he do accept it, we can accept the donation on the minutes next, next meeting.
Okay.
But bring it back if it.
Okay.
I forgot that.
I wanna make sure we're clear.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, y'all gonna drive me back?
Yeah.
When are y'all going again?
Uh, Saturday. Probably Saturday's gonna be the weekend coming. Yep.
If it breaks down, call President Gaines. He's the only mechanic in the group.
Yeah.
We appreciate it. Like I said, we're trying to, you know, make, get some out there that's going. So we get these little trucks going. So we're just trying to protect our ratings.
All right. All right. So this Phil can vote, all in favor vote by using sign "I." Any opposed? May they have the same right.
Is it just you going or someone else going to be?
Uh, Clayton and Billy gonna go, cause they've been talking to him and he's gonna show them everything. And like I said, if, if everything pumping right and there's no leaks and all that, we gonna bring it back and get everybody, serve everybody out of you and then we good to go.
Okay, so you, Billy, who's the third person?
All right, Clayton Humphrey.
Oh, Clayton, that's.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And we thank y'all for working hard for, I'm looking for a truck.
I appreciate it.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Joe Belling. I'm the coordinator for the Sixth Judicial District Adult Intervention Court. And I came to you this morning with two requests. The first request is, uh, for seventy thousand dollars to be allotted for the Mental Health Treatment Court here in, uh, the Sixth Judicial District. That money, uh, is awarded through the Administrative Office of Courts in Jackson and they will one hundred percent reimburse that seventy thousand dollars. Uh, the first seventy thousand that they're, they're giving us is gonna be for starting up the court, uh, buying supplies, desks, computers, everything that's needed to start the, uh, court program under Judge Blackwell. I do have confirmation, I believe it was given to Ms. Lewis, um, that they would reimburse, uh, what the money could be spent for.
Ms. Lewis.
And this is to, this is to create a budget, um, that is fully reimbursed above the state. We also need to have approval to create a fund, correct Scott? Um, because there are, this is a, a new, uh, court that the legislature has set up and so it does not have an established fund through state audit yet. So we need to have authorization to, one, create that fund, two, build that budget, and then extract these funds from AOC to build that budget.
All right. After hearing this, Mr. Bennett and, uh, uh, Acting Administrator, can I get a motion?
No move.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. Are there being discussions?
Mr. President, uh, Ms. Lewis, you say build a budget, build a budget with the money that they give us?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I've actually already created a, a proposal for one and I submitted it to, to Joe and to Judge Blackwell and Judge Jordan. So they have seen it.
All right. If there be any more discussion, if there be none, all in favor vote by using sign "I." Any opposed? May they have the same right. Motion carried. All right.
Okay. The next, the next one is I'm asking for a budget increase, uh, for the Intervention Court in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. There was a memorandum of understanding signed about community bonds and she has not been paid since the memorandum started, which was in October of twenty-two. It was signed in November. She started her services in December.
All right, Ms. Lewis.
I've spoken to Mr. Elling about this and he's provided me the documentation from the state that this is fully reimbursed.
Yes.
All right. Well, after hearing, uh, the question of, uh, Mr. Bennett and, uh, Acting Administrator, Acting Administrator, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, properly seconded by Supervisor Milton. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign "I." Any opposed? May they have the same right. Motion carried. All right.
Thank you.
Apartment report, next.
Good morning. Mary Kay Doherty, Adams County Youth Court. I am here today, um, the Department of Public Safety and Planning had offered, um, the youth court ten thousand dollars for COVID supplies, cleaning supplies. Uh, and we, um, were, we received, we received it. So we did, we did get it. I applied for it and got it. So it's for ten thousand. It's very specific what I can spend it on, but I need to spend it by the end of June, June thirtieth. So it's gonna be quick. All of the supplies will be held over at youth court in, in, uh, so, so, but we'll be using them. So I just need it signed. All the blue tabs are initials. All the yellow tabs are signatures. And I have it ready for you.
I do need it accepted.
We do, as long as they don't leave youth court. I don't.
They won't. I know.
So we need to make a motion to accept it. Uh, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson and properly seconded by Supervisor Gray to accept the grant for ten thousand dollars in the form of supply, uh, for Adams County Youth Court. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign "I." Any opposed? May they have the same right. Motion carried. All right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, uh, excuse me, Mr. President. So you leave, I, I need to say something and I, you could need to hear it. Go, go, go. I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, she gonna sign, get all that signed.
You just want me to stay here? Okay, gotcha.
You gotta, you gotta ask her now.
Well, I'm gonna say now, uh, this is gonna be part of my report and U Court, uh, I got their name there. It's just my opinion that what we have going on with our youth, I feel that we need to better communicate with the school district, with the U Court, with the city and the county and the community. Because what I'm saying is this, once we get a kid that needs some help, then I guess first it comes from the school to y'all, to whoever they need to go to. But what I'm finding out is, is, is the majority of the kids are the same kids getting in trouble. Once they get in trouble over there and they're coming out the streets and doing stuff in the streets. Uh, only thing I'm saying, I, I just believe we need to communicate better and find a way on the front end to try to save these kids and not on the back end. That's all I have to say.
All right.
I've been looking for a response. I just wanted to say that while somebody from the U Court was over here.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Department report next.
Go ahead. I'll be a little bit.
Go ahead.
You gonna pay my roads.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For those of you that don't know me, I am Everett Baker and I'm the Director of Adams County Search and Rescue. Uh, I'm here today to go over a couple of things with you rather than write you a letter and never show up in a meeting. And I haven't been here in a while, so I felt like I needed to come. Uh, the last couple of years, we've, as you know, we are nonprofit. And we generate our own money through fundraisers, projects, those type of things. And over the years, we've been fairly fortunate to be financially secure, okay? Everybody here is asking for money. I'll get to that in a few minutes. Uh, last year we had to buy a new boat. One we had was forty-one years old and the hole, it got tremendously thin. And we took on water up close to, uh, Port Gibson. We were looking for two young men that unfortunately passed away. Got the new boat. Two years ago, we decided we'd put a sonar unit on. For those of you that don't know what a sonar unit is, it's basically called a fish finder, okay? We bought one pretty high-tech. Shows water temperature, navigational stuff in the river, all, all kind of things you need, especially if you're at night working. All right. That brings me to today. Based on the past incident we've had at the port. Uh, my partners and I, Wild Island Fisheries works with us very closely when it comes to real issues. Uh, they had the need, or we felt like we had a need for somebody to get a unit out of civil or either woodland, private fishermen, to come up here and help us look at this guy. They had what they call a life scope. It gives you a lot more detail of what's on the bottom. You can see a lot more stuff. They were in a sixty-thirty thousand dollar boat and they couldn't get up in the areas where we felt like they needed to go. That's been the here and there. Where I'm coming, where I'm headed with this, my board and the membership decided to purchase a unit very similar to the one that they had. They put that unit on the boat last Friday. We picked it up. We have not had a chance to get it in the water. Uh, like I said, we've been fairly financially secure. We try to maintain about ten thousand dollars in our account for various things that come up, repairs that need to be done. This unit's gonna cost us about forty-four hundred bucks. We got the money to pay for it and then I'm gonna go over to the staff and write the check. It's the unit that I feel like we needed to stay advanced with technology. We'd be able to look up underneath things such as the feeders, but we can't get a boat up on log jams where we felt like that individual was and he did turn up there. Uh, but we couldn't get in there. We couldn't see, okay? We, anyway, we purchased this unit to, to tune about forty-four hundred bucks. And what I'm here today is, number one, bring you up to speed. It's where our, our outfit is in the service that we provide and can provide. We feel like that this is gonna expand our capability to some other counties that don't have these type of assets. Wild Island Fisheries does not even have these type of assets. So with that, I'm asking for a donation. Everybody's wanting money and I understand that. And I'm not really gonna give you an amount, plus or minus. I'm gonna leave it up to the board to make that decision. But, uh, to get us back up to about ten grand where we feel like we're comfortable, uh, a couple of thousand dollars would certainly be appreciated. With that, any questions?
You have a comment? I, I do want one of your cards, if you don't mind, just, just for me, if you happen to have a card. Is this, uh, something we can do, Scott, or is this, uh, one of those things they have to make requests?
These are a little bit kind of, man.
I think I need to do.
To make sure it's legal that we can do it.
I think we talked about doing a donation form and, and having that to be when they apply. And they just may a chance to look at it and make sure it's legal before we do it all. Uh, with search and rescue, probably can find a way that it's, it's legal. It's probably not gonna be a donation per se, but probably ways to do it. I don't wanna be probably, just, if it's wrong and Chad comes and asks us to write a check for it. Uh, but now is the time where we start asking, sort of reviewing budgets and things like that. So everyone, I'll get you the form, fill it out. You do need to ask for an amount. So I know you see it put in your heart, but that's, we need to ask for an amount and do that.
Doug, just to count, and I don't know whether you are an attorney for the board or not. I can't recall how many years ago it was, but we had to buy a new motor. Uh, for obvious reasons, one we had thirty years old. And y'all made a donation, a donation then. Uh, we had generated up to about twelve or thirteen thousand dollars. The board kicked in about another two grand and we ready to purchase that motor. So we've done it, or y'all have done it. I just don't know.
How it was done.
How it was done.
I, like I said, I'm pretty confident it is, but, but anyway, we'll, we're starting a new process. We're getting it in writing, we're gonna look at it and then we'll bring it to the board for, for approval. And it may be, I don't know, maybe next fiscal year, maybe this fiscal year. It just depends on what it's.
Get them the necessary form and you get your necessary paperwork filled out and get it back and we'll move from there.
Just, just for your, just for your information, this incident we had at the port was the longest time we have ever spent looking for an individual. We spent some eight hundred and eighty-four man-hours over the total period, including when we recovered him. Uh, and that's basically due to the circumstances, due to the location where we felt like he was. So we stayed on top of it. Uh, but the guys that I had, unfortunately, it didn't turn out to be, to be helpful. If we'd have had that piece of equipment, we might have been able to do it a little quicker.
And give the family quicker closure on that. That, that, that was sad, just what.
That's, that's, that's the main thing.
All right.
Yeah, but that being said, I think, I feel confident to say that everyone is grateful for what Search and Rescue does. And, uh, this form is just a new protocol, just to cover our rear ends because. And, uh, this form's just a new protocol, just to cover our rear ends, because it's a different world now. We're staying in audit, so I don't think we're gonna have a problem, but we thank you for everything you did.
Everyone else has come in asking for money, and already they had to go through the form process as well, too, but even budgets and things like that.
I spent thirty, I spent thirty something years to take them, so I'm not.
It's been rolled off the floor for the team.
Thank y'all, I'll be into it, Scott.
Thank you.
Mr. Baker, do you have a card you can give, uh, Robbie for me?
No, sir, but I'll, I'll get you my contact.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Good morning, how y'all doing?
Hey, Ryan, how's it going?
Alright, uh, just need to hire another person, we had somebody leave the, the tipper center, and we just need to hire him. Paperwork's already been submitted, the guy's name is James Thompson, y'all should have it already.
I have it, uh, you heard the request, he, uh, was to hire James Thompson as a juvenile detention officer, hour rate twelve dollars an hour. Can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by supervisor Milton, proper second by supervisor Gray, uh, but it be in a discussion? If there be no more discussion, I'll in favor vote by using the sign of aye. Any opposed, may he have the same right, motion carried. Next, Department of Labor report.
Good morning, I have to comment two things this morning. Um, I submitted a request for to hire an employee, she's gonna be transferring, Erika Washington. I sent it over to Ms. Blanton. Nope, she, she declined, that was a different young lady.
Oh, it's a different young lady?
Yes.
Do I have paperwork?
I sent it over, but I brought your copy also.
Yeah, Erika Washington, I do have it.
Yes.
We have paperwork, uh, medical assistant, uh, so you heard the request, a nurse practitioner, age fifteen dollars an hour. Can I get a motion? And properly move my supervisor Gray? Proper second by supervisor Wilson, if there be any discussion, if there be no more discussion, I'll in favor vote by using the sign of aye. Any opposed, may he have the same right, motion carried.
I wanna, I know me and Scott, we spoke, uh, spoke about it maybe a year or so ago, we're trying to get a contract with, or MOU with Merrick Health, or just some kind of imaging center. Where the inmates just, um, having a lot of incidents, like I mean, x-rays and ultrasound, things that does not have to go through the ER. So if we could, I guess if we get together or discuss how we can, uh, put something in place so that if I needed to get something that was like pressing, that I don't have to wait up to the next board meeting to get it done. Cause right now, what I'm using is the ER for, for mostly anything, cause that's the only way I can get a picture, you know, an image.
So you've been, so you've been working on that?
We worked on it, and kind of the ball kind of dropped us on to the CFO, I, I can't remember her name out there, we're trying to do something with the Medicaid rates to make sure no.
Yeah, they want more, what we, lawfully to pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, with my, with my hands off, I don't, I don't go to the emergency room, but the doctor's center over there, I do a cash price, and I mean, it's like, goes from fourteen hundred dollars down to two hundred dollars.
Right, right.
It's like, it's, it's crazy, but, and I just don't know, I, I'm sure you could work something out with him like, like that, but I.
Yes.
The tension gets in, cause they send a lot of claims over, we reject a lot of claims, you know, they're not happy, you know, they don't act, they're not happy with the delay, and that kind of stuff, and, you know. County's not gonna pay something legally, they haven't done what they're supposed to do, they get paid, and so, you know. So it's, we can be with them to get, raise some bill, if you need.
I'll give you your call, we'll have to leave.
Okay, okay, yes, sir, thank you.
Alright, next, Department of Labor report.
Morning, boy.
Morning. Morning.
First of all, I'm gonna start off, uh, selection year throughout the county, it's a lot of signs being put up on county right-of-way, we go through this every four years. So I just wanna let the board know that we're cutting grass, we're gonna start removing those signs that's on our right-of-way, we will keep those signs, we will call each person that's responsible for those signs, and let them know where they're at. Uh, we've done this in the past, ever since I've been here, but I just wanna put it out, let the board know that, you know, it is the road department having to do this, it's in our way of cutting grass, cleaning ditches and things like that. So that's something that I want to run forward today. Now, we're gonna start, I haven't started picking them up yet, but after this meeting, we will start picking them up.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I know it ain't gonna help, but, um, during an election year, I think it would be to help when, when somebody qualified to run for something. They should have some information, uh, where they can and can't put these signs that can help the road department from having, uh, go pick up all these signs. Somebody had to come there, you know, they probably don't know what the right way is, but I just feel like when, when you go get your application, and it should be something with a saying, these are the places you can and can't put your personal signs. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, well, that's something we might need to talk to another state. I didn't get, I didn't, and last, the state requires third-of-feet in all state highways, they're gonna move them for third-of-feet, they're gonna.
And I have seen a few on the state, and they have been moved.
And they've been moved?
Yeah, they don't, they don't stay long, they're there too, and they're moved, but like I said, it's been a couple of weeks since the last meeting, I started noticing a lot of them.
Yeah, so, then, in a kind of way, we, we don't need a motion for that, just, alright, you continue, Mr.
Next thing I have, uh, supervisor Wilson, uh, speed hunts on Colony Red Fox, and those areas, uh, engineer did get out, take a look at that area, they did get them marked. Uh, I think I need to get, you probably, uh, there's four old speed hunts there now, they've marked eleven new locations, I think.
Eleven?
I think that's a lot, but I mean, that's what I said, we might wanna look at the area.
Maybe we need to get together.
And look through, but like I said, they did get out, do what they were asked to do, uh, but I don't think that's.
Well, they got fifty or sixty teenagers from driving lots of down, they really.
So, uh, but yeah, I just, uh, give a few of them, let you know, they did do their part, so we got it, and we're moving forward with that process.
Uh, yeah, I need your advice on that.
Okay, uh, next thing I have, um, supervisor Gaines, it started a couple of weeks on this, uh, on the asphalt. He set up some more money available, uh, after he got the check, and then I was doing some road checking and things like that, it's for, uh, high-hazard roads, uh. And we're gonna move forward with it, try and get some things done on it, uh, I did get with A-PAC to get a, uh, updated price per mile. I have got with the state, uh, Mr. Stewart, the guy that does the sign projects for us, and he does it on a crash by roads. Uh, like I said, Morgantown Road, the completion of Morgantown from Myrtle to the north end. Uh, looks like it probably qualified the Kingston Liberty Road, uh, North Palestine Cranfield, depends on how much money's out there, but these are the ones that he's done crash studies on, and he's got his data on it, so I can get that to do where I need to.
I, I'll give you a, that, uh, give y'all an update, uh, for the board, we was looking, I was searching for, uh, went to a conference, and they had some grants out for more, uh, more asphalt. But what it did, once we got to digging and looking at roads, it was for high-hazard, we'll have to, uh, submit it through the engineer, there's a federal grant that's, uh, for like. And, and I first thought about, you know, Morgantown, Kingston Road, Liberty Road, those, there, so I mean, I just, I just kinda went on, did the legwork, cause we working as a county, as a whole, not as an area. So, uh, when, when Mr. Ford, uh, does come up, you know, I, I'll ask for permission for the board to allow him to go ahead and apply for this money. That's where we at on, uh, supervisor Milk, supervisor Gray, and supervisor Wilson, alright?
Supervisor Gray, Southview homeowner is working, he's cleaning, he's doing, uh, we hadn't had any more fires out there, but he is, uh, picking them up, hauling them up.
Progress.
Uh, yes, I've been out there twice last week, he was working both times I was there, uh, so he should be getting it cleaned up himself. If not, then we'll move forward on the county's end, but he is trying to get it. Uh, I might ask the board, uh, to give IMS, I guess, permission. I had a call last, week before last, uh, between the Living World Worship Center out behind Berker King, north side of town, there in Health Department. It's some drainage, do that church property itself, but it's some inlet off the road, like stormwater drains, I don't know if they tied to it, I can't find any drawings or whatever on it. Uh, to let them do some research to see if the county has any responsibility or whatever of damaged pipes, they have a lot of sinkage in that yard where the pipes are running out towards the creek. So I don't know if our stormwater tied into those, or if that's a trunk line, or what, I, I don't know. Uh, it was done years ago, uh, but it's between the health department and the church, but it is on church property. So I'm asking the board if IMS should try.
You got your question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Have you, have you got with the city?
I've talked to the city, what they have.
I mean, Ford, the waterworks.
I, I have, I, I have, I've got a, a drawing from them, but it's, it's not helpful far as whose it is, or who, or what's on there, is what I'm saying, I don't know who's responsible back, what I got, city county would provide the dirt. So that's all it said on the draw, I've talked to Mr. Marlowe, before, you know, before I come here, just trying to do some homework, Mr. Marlowe said he don't have any knowledge. So I would've thought that would've been a start, only, you know, for them being county engineers for those years back when all that was developed and going, but it does have on there the county would supply the dirt.
What's what Max is saying is, if, if Mr. Marlowe been working here that long, he don't have no knowledge, is it because it's inside the city limits?
I guess, but we don't, the health department has stormwater running off the health department, goes, I, I say, I don't know if it goes into it or not, but it goes that direction off of our inlet, you know, from the stormwater.
And the waterworks don't have nothing to do with it?
It's not stamped, what I've got from them is not stamped by engineer, you know what I'm saying, who designed it, I don't know, I don't know if they designed it, as you're saying, uh, Mr. Gray, back, you know, then, might've been designed in that office of the waterworks, I don't know. But it's not stamped on it, but I, you know, it was.
Roger, is it our liability in the edge of our property, or is it?
Cause I can't, can't answer that, I'm just saying, if our stormwater ties to that trunk line, I don't know who's responsible, cause they got inlets in their churchyard, greats on, you know, that tie, but I don't know if ours ties to that, I, I just don't.
Are they big enough where somebody can, they can go through there and see, uh, where they have cameras?
Cameras, see, we don't have a camera, the only person that's got a camera is the city.
The waterworks.
Waterworks, uh, we have from you from in the past, uh, I can, but like I said, just to try to figure out who's the owner, I was gonna see, you know, IMS could research it, but I don't know where they're gonna come up with something too, but. You know, I haven't found anything out for it, Mr. Marlowe, going through the city, I heard Justin send me some drawings, like I said, they're not stamped, it does say the county would provide dirt. So that's all I can say.
We can put the pipe in, though, and say some.
That's all I can find, so I'm saying, you know, I've done what I could do. Uh, Mr. Gray, uh, we spoke the last meeting, property at Colonel Pitcher. I did get a estimate of what the value of timber is on that property, uh, on twelve, fifteen hundred dollars per acre, you know, course per acre, of what's timber's worth on that property. If y'all wanna move forward with it, I guess we could advertise, or, you know, get a, put it out for advertising, do part of it, do thirty acres, or do fifty acres, or do the whole hundred and twenty, or whatever I can do.
Uh, Mr. President, so, once, if we decide to do that, then are we gonna have a dirt pit, for dirt?
Yes, bound to dirt, and there we can level it down to marketable value.
Right, right now, we buying a whole lot of dirt, and the whole thing I was saying, if we have county-owned property, that, that we can cut the trees down and get our own dirt off, that'll leave the others from buying dirt from somewhere else.
Until we use all that. We got a budget amendment today, I think, dirt only, and it's loose.
There's, it's only?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, what, what would be your recommendation as far as how much we cut and, and start working on?
That's what I said, I'd probably do the first thirty, forty acre dirt in front, you know, get our right-of-way in and do that, and then once we get that down to what we want, then we going back, you know, uh.
What, what kind of timber's on there?
It's oak and some pine, like I said, I just reached out to someone, just give me a rough idea of what it would worth, and they did, but I mean, we got to put it out, you know.
Oh, Christ, Christ isn't the best in the world with timber, but I'm, it's okay, I think, but yeah, if it's gonna stay on the dirt end, we need to try to do it as soon as possible.
What's the plan to the board?
I make the motion, we, we get started on his recommendation, clearing forty acres, or cutting forty acres, and, uh, establishing another dirt pit for us.
Uh, it's been properly moved by supervisor, uh, Wilson, can I get a second?
Second.
It's been properly settled by supervisor Gray, that we allow the road manager to move forward advertising for clearing at least forty acres of the property on primary.
That's correct, I'll look for a good survey or whatever, we gotta, you know, make sure the boundaries and things like that, try to get.
Sunday second, uh, Jerry?
Yeah, so, it is minimal discussion, yeah.
Okay, what kind of shape does the timber in on that place, I mean, does it need to be select cut, the rest of it, the hundred and twenty acres, to make?
Probably a good, yeah, no, I didn't walk the whole hundred and twenty, but I walked a good bit of it several months back.
Who's gonna crew that, or?
I, I, I gotta advertise, I ain't picking, but we gotta, we gotta put that out.
I got you, alright, while, while we're there, I think we ought to check the whole track, and see if we need to cut some of that out there, just to.
Let them select cut it, okay?
Mr. Milk, on the point.
And just for clarification, this is just for advertising?
Advertising, this was, you got it, just for advertising, alright, any more discussion, I'll in favor vote by using the sign of aye. Any opposed, may he have the same right, motion carried now, okay, Mr. Dawes?
That's pretty, uh, well, what I have, well, I got one more thing, uh, and we need to, you know, I guess, make a decision, I mean, we have in the past, but we might wanna change it or whatever, uh, our intro. We get a lot of calls, a lot of people's honest, a lot of people's not honest, uh, and it'd be so much easier on the road department, either yea or nay, and move forward, because at the end of the day, we're paying tipping fees in. Pretty much, I, I mean, I know contractors go in and cut some, but ninety-five percent of them is gonna try to get away with this as well. And it's hard telling y'all, it's very hard for us to know who's doing what, when they're doing it, cause we're not all over the county to see it, until they call and say it's in our reach. And then we go out there and we look, and it's two, three trees, or one big tree that's been cut, uh. They carry it to the landfill, half the county residents, carrying a dump truck, we're paying the tipping fee, bottom line. Only thing we're not paying is Jeff, and the wear and tear on the truck, and a few. It'd be so much easier on my secretaries, cause they get chewed out two, three times a week, and that ain't no Jeff, maybe two, three times a day, on the right day. That people call and say, hi, come, why not, why don't you come look? We don't need to pick up a kind contractor, but we do need to pick up, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And I've had to make some decisions with them, just tell them, you know, we're coming, we're doing, but if it's anything with it, the cranes and stuff like that out, no. But otherwise, I'm gonna do what I gotta do to keep them off of those secretaries, cause I'm telling you, they get eaten every week, so I'm just letting the board know that.
And this, I, I understand, you know, but I have a couple of situations that.
It's hard.
And, 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 you know, that, that these are situations that cross the line, that you got older folks in the neighborhood, you got folks who are being neighborless, and go cut to them without contracting for them. But then we can't pick it up, because they, they thinking that, well, they paid them for the contracted job, you understand what I'm saying, it's, it's just so thin a, a line right there, we can almost, you, you can kinda tell if somebody get a, a. It's, it's just so thin a, a line right there. We can almost, you, you can kind of tell if somebody get a, a contracting job. They got all this stuff over here and they come cut and they pile up all the trees. But it's a difference when you got, uh, you go help your neighbor. Well, I'd say, okay, I got a truck, you eighty years old, I'm gonna go limb your tree, but I'm, I'm gonna limit it for you. I'm gonna put it by the road if they haul it off. And then they, you know, somebody called and said, well, I didn't have a contractor. They came here and they did this. So, you know, it's kind of like Robbie said. We gotta pay tipping fees anyway and they're just giving them a little more option to be able to make the judge, not taking away saying we picking up behind contractors. But him to be able to judge the situation because you can obviously when a contractor there, you can obviously see some talent.
If you've got skids, cranes and stuff like that there, I, I don't mean, I, I can pick it up. But if it's a pile out there and, and she says, well, my neighbor, and, and that is the case sometimes, sometimes it's not. Sometimes a contractor does it. He charges the four people and, and they leave and he charges for the boat, but tell, call the county. Now, I mean, you know, y'all, y'all here, I mean, but it, it's just decisions I'm gonna have to make and move forward. And I just wanted to let the board know that if it's wrong, it's on me. I'm gonna put that out.
Oh, a lot of these tree contractors, are they licensed? Are they general contractors?
I guess, but I mean, you know, when they get in the county, I mean, what do you have? I mean, you know, there we're supposed to start building and things like that, and I don't know, but you just get to the county.
I wish we had some kind.
Bother man from the city.
Yeah, I wish we had some kind of permitting, which you never cut trees like that, but you're right. I thought it ends up being a lot of tipping fees.
Did he?
Uh, any suggestions, uh, Mr. Slow?
I mean, you can always start asking for permits and things like that, and that may be something that's good, may not be something that you wanna do.
Well, Mr. President, I'm gonna say right now, uh, I understand both sides just like you, but I got a lot of seniors in my area and, and got a lot of good people trying to help them and they go over there, cut some and put it out front. But still like Robbie saying, you got all this extra equipment, you going way up in the air and all that, 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 that ain't helping. It may be helping, but you a contractor. I'm just talking about somebody like me. That live next door to a senior citizen.
Somebody take power saw and they want to cut out, I go cut. Between force saw and chainsaw than you can bucket trucks and, and skids, tears and things like that.
Ten foot, forty.
Well, we probably only got ten or fifteen people in the whole county to do that, huh?
Cut tree?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Probably.
Uh, if we can notify them and say, you know, if, 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 you know, you're gonna have to start reporting or, or we have some kind of system in place where they have to tell us where they're gonna be cutting at, who they're cutting for, and what, what kind of arrangements they made with these people, um.
With him, with the President. I, I agree with you, but he go to care. I work for caring company that cut trees. And, and I, I mean, he don't get along. I've got five. So I'm gonna take my power saw and go cut some trees down for myself and try to make me some money, but do that person have a license or, or whatever to do it? It's just a chance a senior citizen taking to get a person that's unlicensed up over their house cutting some down from it and fall down through it.
What's it, what's the cost, Robbie?
The tipping fee?
Yes.
About five fifty a yard.
Yes, sir, um.
Huh?
I cut down a tree. How much you think it cost?
Well, the trucks, I, I live truck, it run you about eighty-five to a hundred dollars. Just, just come be.
Per truck. Five or six loads.
Yeah.
Per tree.
Five or six loads per tree?
Yes.
Five or six.
Could be ten.
Let me, let me talk about a situation I was involved in where a contractor cut a tree down. And Jeff shows up and the contractor's now next door. And Jeff says, we don't pick up behind contractors. And that contractor goes and writes a letter to the resident stating how sorry Wes Milton is and Adams County Board Supervisors, cause they're not doing their job. Well, I get a copy of his bid and he charged them, disposed. But then it's the county to go tip. That's what we're dealing with.
And say county not to get out.
Dirty is what it is. It's not the county and the taxpayer's responsibility to clean up behind a contractor. Period. The end.
And you know, that, that's why, uh, one of the things that we said is, uh, when I said that first, we, we have said and, uh, we'll move on. Uh, I heard what Robbie said. We end up paying tipping fee and we don't wanna pick up behind contractors. We not gonna pick up behind contractors. All we gonna is losing the reins, so he will not have a pressure on him so he can make better decision. That's all. You know what I'm saying? We all think nobody in the board wanna pick up behind a contractor, but we wanna ease his job to let him make a decision.
I wanna ease my two secretary's job.
That's all.
I'll be honest, cause they, I'm, anybody need to talk to them one on one, that's it. That's their worst of my calls.
And in the process, we'll get together. If there's any other things there, we'll, we'll put our heads together and you move forward and we'll put our heads together. Or talk to Scott, whatever we need to do and we do it.
Yeah, you have a suggestion on that. You, you wanna work up something, cause I.
We're working on it, but like I said, I mean, behind contractors is really, like he said, no, we approve because I mean, that ninety percent of them are charging you to dispose.
Right, and they leave.
He got a copy.
They, they make that clear profit for the five hundred dollar disposal.
Correct.
Or whatever it is.
And then like I said, us picking up hauling it to the wear and tear on my truck and the fuel, that, but you know, um, and there again, like I said, tipping fees is what the board needs to understand too.
You're right.
That's Adams County, and that's Mississippi. If you're Adams County resident, if you go out there, we pay to be.
Yeah, right.
Out of my home.
Well, I appreciate it, Robbie. All right, well, we gonna move on to the next.
I, I have one thing.
One more discussion.
You don't have to be, um, Greenfield Road, intersection Kingston Road.
Correct. I got that.
Okay, now, they wants to cut a whole bank down. We probably don't.
We can't do that, but I don't know.
So can you put a blinking sign up?
I'll do something.
Caution sign and that curve, boat coming from boat direction.
I bought it out.
Whatever.
President, this, we, we got a no dumping sign down at the end and they still dumping.
Nobody arrested? Nobody married? Who is it? Anybody?
I ain't get a chance to ask. I was just, saw a abandoned house down there and, uh, I talked to Scott about that. But then I saw where the no dumping sign was and we got fresh.
Do a low one right there.
And up the street a little bit, looked like they creating another bit everywhere they dumping.
All right, Robbie, one more, uh, that's how this weekend, Andy Lane, you know, uh, he said we, we, we were supposed to dump a little dirt on the living or something like that. He's supposed to put a flag up. And he said, bus coming around right there in the driveway, need a little gravel and straighten out, uh, so I don't know. I just want you to check Andy Lane. And you, you know, uh, the resident. All right.
I just, I just got something on my phone. This is kind of a, yeah, Robbie and, uh, Shane back there, uh, wasn't even sure who to report this to, but every street sign from Stella Road to the highway was vandalized last night. You heard anything about that?
I would check reports, you have the value of it, but not a lot.
I heard.
The gallows and.
From Stella to the highway.
Stella to the highway. I don't know what, what, no pictures here.
All right. Next, departmental report.
Certainly. There's a camera in the house. It got some.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, good morning, board. Uh, just some updates, uh, on Friday, we did submit the probable cause estimate to everyone for potential safety projects for review. So, uh, whenever you guys make a decision, or if you guys make a decision on any safety project, you like the program, uh, just let us know. Um, we are requesting recommendations from signature for all board members for the program forum for what will be called SAP O one ten O M. Another striping on a project for Lower Woodville Road, Arman Road and Kingston Road. So we're requesting, um, authorization for you all to sign up for it.
We have, I have it in my hand. You heard the, uh, request of the engineer can I get a motion? A little, they're properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly settled by Supervisor Wilson. Are they in discussion?
Yes, President.
Yeah.
Lower Woodville, I just wanna talk about the.
It's not.
It's not?
Yeah, we from Cardinal Pittsburgh to right past Cog Hill Drive.
Now, now, when, when we were doing the research for the pay.
Yeah.
There was an additional plan that showed there was additional point nine miles of Lower Woodville Road from Holland Boulevard back to, um, Carthage, uh, Carthage Point. So there was an additional point nine miles going further north.
That, uh, I just wanna verify when I pay for striking, yeah, applies and something.
First part of the state aid, Cardinal Pittsburgh to right past Cog Hill Drive. That's state, that's a state aid.
And, and he's fixing to hit on something else. It's gonna, gonna make me ask a question anyway, was, uh, if we get additional, uh, asphalt on the roads like Kingston Road, some of these, we're talking about striping now. Are we gonna have, already have that section mapped out so we don't stripe it and then cover it up?
Right, I mean.
Or how far out is this plan anyway that he, uh?
This, this is, this is just a grant that don't be due. I think sometime in June, we, we just giving him the opportunity. Uh, if we, if this is what we decide today, uh, me and Robbie did the legwork on it and Robbie did the other legwork once we figured it out. So we'll give it to the engineer and he will actually have to submit it. So there's no guarantee on it.
Right, but I just don't want to stripe in the area.
They call that green stripe on the drive down.
Yeah, so, and, and I'm pretty much sure that, uh, with the, the studies and once we give with, uh, give with that, the grants you have, you know, federal grants and guidelines, so I'm, I'm pretty much sure that they have some kind of guideline on what you're doing.
Another thing I have is, um, we're still waiting on, I guess, the properties for the E W P. So once we get that signature about the property on, we can advertise those. So, and then the other thing I have is, uh, phase one comments for Morgantown Road are still being addressed. And we do have the bid open for phase two on this Wednesday at ten o'clock at the city.
Where is that?
At the city.
George, you wanna go ahead and advertise for the E W P? We'll have it right away in four minutes.
Okay.
Especially with, I got confirmation from you. You can include that into your plans and, and restore it's all present.
We need to, but time learned out.
All right. I, 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 so I set an advertisement for Wednesday, the May twenty-fourth and May thirty-first. And I did submit a request for an extension for this project as well on behalf of the county. So that, cause I knew we were having some time with one of the property owners. So I talked and they said that project has never had an extension on, so he didn't see the issue with us giving one. So I did submit it. That was about two weeks ago.
This is on Magnolia Bluff Road?
I know your Bluff Road, two and three, and Lincoln High Road.
So do we need to, uh, make more to give him permission? Scott? I heard. So you need to make, I, I wanna be clear. The motion is giving him permission to advertise the Lincoln Heights and Magnolia Bluff on E W P. All right. Can I get a motion?
We, we already had one, but it was continuing on getting the signature.
Oh, okay. We covered.
You go ahead.
Okay. Just wanna make sure we covered.
Yeah, I can do it again, just to be sure, but.
Yeah, well, can I get a motion? They're probably moved by Supervisor Milton, probably settled by Supervisor Gray. There be in discussion? Yeah. If there be the discussion, all in favor, vote by you and sign a aye. Any opposed, may have the same right.
I don't have anything. If you wanna get the information too.
Yeah, and I agree with them and, uh, we'll get with, uh, make sure it's the fellow grant. And we, we, I, I'm touching basically with you and, and the information that, uh, Robert had. I think that's a lot of the legwork, just figuring out the statistics on those roads right there. And so we'll get together on that.
I'm waiting to have you that and I'm waiting to have you the description of the church and Jeff, walk with that. Gray, you sit there. We'll check.
George, I don't know if you had a chance to look at this. It was an email they sent Friday about a modification, um, N D Q with some sub recipients may need to modify their sub award agreement for an application. It said, you may not. We, we had it like late morning Friday. I did. We need to do it any day on it.
Kinda look at it.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
And that's it?
Anybody have any more questions? If not, uh, we thank you for the job. We'll be in touch so we can get you all the proper information on, on the grant.
All right. And following Wednesday, the bid open, I will prepare a bid tab and send out to everyone for Morgantown Road, phase two.
Phase two. So, but B W will be this Wednesday for Morgantown Road, phase two.
Yes.
At the city.
At the city.
Ten o'clock.
Yes, sir.
For, for Bridge, it looks like we're getting some comments back from the, was it our guys in history? Um, there are four total landowners. One of them is the federal government that Dragon has taken forever. One of them is, is already agreeing to donate to the right way, get her to request in compensation for it. I need a resolution. Uh, we need to get a sort of waiver appraisal to set up their mountain value for two of them.
Uh, you ready to quit at that time? So the, the fact that they're probably moved by Supervisor Wood, uh, Milton and settled by Supervisor Gray, they get.
The resolution, we said a waiver, uh, appraisal waiver or waiver valuation. I will send, I'm gonna say it on the same page, the, the resolution.
There be in discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by you and sign a aye. Any opposed, may have the same right. Motion carried now.
And I'll reach out to him. I thought that's a flat project, so you know they have a, a deadline on it. I'm just trying to make sure, uh, that I reach out to them, make sure that any extension thing can be made for, for Rock Road. All right. I appreciate you all the time as always.
And just know, keep building that over. We're gonna fight again on.
I would.
Your work.
Thank you, all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ford. Uh, next departmental report gets it on you, Sean.
No, not in a matter of days.
Uh, good morning. Just have a few things. Um, we have a part-time position, uh, down at S O G. We're gonna turn that into a part-time investigator position. The old pay rate for the part-time investigator, and I've spoke with Ms. Lewis about this, and we've actually reviewed budget. The pay rate is going to be higher, however, the, uh, total amount every two weeks will be the same. So, uh, it'll be hired, hired at a higher pay rate in part-time, but work less hours. Um, and that will be a Ronnie Coleman. Some of you may know him. He's currently, uh, a lieutenant at Vidalia Police Department, retired from here. And, uh, he'll work about twenty to twenty-four hours, uh, down in investigations.
Well, I have the paperwork.
Yes, sir. You should have the paperwork.
Is he on benefits?
No, no.
Not on PERS?
No. Oh, yes, he is on PERS, yes.
Is he in the.
Yes, he, he's already verified all of that and that is, um.
Is he, he's working for a quarter of his pay?
Yes, it is.
Uh, that's somebody who's retired, Ronnie Coleman.
Ronnie Coleman, yes, sir.
Fifty. So this, this is like the deal with the road department. They come back and they work so many hours, they show up.
He's, he's retired, how long?
He's been on that day.
Oh, yes, sir. He's been at Vidalia Police Department for several years.
Okay. All right. Well, you ready to request?
It's already been, what? Oh, is it, he's, was he an investigator when he left?
I don't know what he was. I think he retired under Ronnie Brown, if I'm not mistaken, and then went over to Vidalia. He, he's retired out of PERS. He's working full-time in Vidalia.
Yeah, just to do that, no. It just funny, uh, somebody give human resources because there's a report they have to do for those employees who are retired that come back. Um, state authorities just reminded us that.
Okay.
No, no problem.
And actually, that's the first place he goes is H R whenever he starts. So that first day, that's where he goes.
All right, uh, you heard the, um, request of the chief executive, uh, standing in motion. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson. It's been properly settled by Supervisor Gray. Are there be in discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by you and sign a aye. Any opposed, may have the same right. Motion carried now.
Uh, I have several pay rate changes. Uh, these officers have been in an acting position of a supervisor. Uh, the first one, and you should have all of those, Mr. President, is Laverius Dorsey.
I seen the name, yeah. Supervisor left or something, Shane?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Uh, we, we've had, we have three corporals acting as sergeants right now.
All right. I got, I got him. Got, got, got Mr. Dorsey.
So Mr. Dorsey, uh, will go to the pay rate of nineteen eighty-eight, uh, an hour into the rank of sergeant. He's currently a corporal.
Okay, uh, who, have you already got with, uh, Ms. Lewis, Grant?
No, I haven't looked at these. I looked at the one previous, which was Mr. Coleman.
Was a new hire. These, these are all still within budget.
Yes.
Because they, they are spots that we have had, it just, we never did fill them once those people left. So, well, within budget, it should all still equal out. The new hire I got with Ms. Lewis, cause we wanted to change the rate of pay.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, you know, and, and I'm saying, what we try to do is just make sure that everything is there, uh, when we approve, I understand y'all, y'all, so other words, y'all get like an internal investigation on y'all budget to make sure that you're stable in your budget. Uh, you have positions, but. You had positions, but you didn't have them at hire, am I correct?
Yes, sir, there's four sergeants for patrol.
Yes, right.
And he was a corporal filling that sergeant position.
I'm saying.
So that, there was nobody in that sergeant position.
So the money was there.
Was this done within, since October? When did this position become empty?
He's been, he's been filling in there for, I can't give you an exact date, it's been quite a while.
So I mean, if it's within the, if it's not, if it was vacant last fiscal year, they wouldn't have necessarily kept that money in there?
It hadn't been over, over a year. I just, I can't tell you exactly when it was, I just, it hasn't been over.
So basically, what, basically, I see where we're going, but what I'm gonna do is do this. Hold on, let me do this. What we'll do is look at them since we had the paperwork signed. And it'll be my recommendation that we'll go ahead and do them pending the review of the administrator. If the money is there. If, if that's, okay. But I'm gonna wait till you do them all at one time, then I'll get there, yeah, we're gonna do them. Okay, so we can move forward, if they're already with the board? Okay, alright, so we're gonna do, start with Mr. Dorsey, we're gonna move forward. I do have the paperwork to sign right here, can I get a motion? There's been property moved by supervisor Wilson, can I get a second? Property settled by supervisor Gray, all in favor vote by you, sign a I. And opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried and then.
The next one will be, next one will be Gabrielle Knight, she's going from radar patrol deputy to corporal. And that is a pay rate of seventeen ninety-one an hour.
Alright, you heard the request, pending the review of the administrator, can I get a motion? There's been property moved by supervisor Gray, property settled by supervisor Milton. There'll be a discussion, if there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you, sign a I.
The next three are in the jail, there's only one jail sergeant right now. I'll promote these next three, two jail sergeants, you want me to do all three at one time?
Yeah, all of them is the same pay rate, fourteen twenty-five, Calvin Butler.
Maggie Dawson and Queria Pointer.
Queria Pointer, all of that same pay rate, all paperwork here, pending review of the administrator. Wilson, Calvin Butler, Queria Pointer, and Maggie Dawson. Alright, there's been property moved by supervisor Gray, can I get a second? There's property settled by supervisor Wilson, will there be a discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you, sign a I. And opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried and then.
We have one resignation in the jail, Eliza Latham, her last day will be five twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three. And I believe HR has a copy of that resignation letter.
I do not have the resignation though, so when they are sending it to me, I will just approve it on the next, next meeting, if this is okay, one?
Yes, sir.
What's the name, Eliza Latham?
Eliza Latham, L A, L A T H A M. Chief Neely said that the county was supposed to be looking to see if they had fuel tanks to sit above the ground behind the sheriff's office. We have to get those tanks out, I believe they discussed it maybe in the board meeting before last.
What were we gonna do about that?
It came up about, I remember, I remember it came up, but I, I don't remember.
It was left at the county believed that they had some above-ground tanks that they could use as opposed to digging the old ones out.
What size tanks, you know?
Uh, you know what, do you have any idea?
Who's, who we are dealing with?
Uh, that is the fuel for the generators and stuff, so I would assume that comes from over there on, from Pittsburgh Cozers.
Magy, and he doesn't have one to offer, or?
I don't know.
Be on stand, or is it gonna be a, what? Yeah, I would talk to Magy.
I'll tell him to ask, it was just, it was left at the board, the board thought they had one or two laying around.
Then you, that, we buy a few from them, they use it on the charge, I think that's a charge of like a dollar per year, just to give Joe their lease and his tank.
Okay, well, we'll ask, we'll ask. Ms. Lewis, do I need to bring up the Glock, the budget amendment for the Glocks?
I, I emailed her back, but I didn't get confirmation on one thing, so I didn't, um.
So what has happened is, a small portion of the federal money has been awarded, we received the checks. You can use that money for three things, equipment, overtime, and training. What we wanna do is upgrade the entire department to Gen Five Glock nine millimeters, going way from the forty. And they will all have night sights on them. Trading our old ones in and purchasing these new ones is exactly what the amount is that has been awarded so far. Now, there is more money coming, however, we have received the check for this money. And I believe I've talked to y'all about it before, that we were expecting it for some time.
And I did get confirmation from, I hope you didn't, sorry. I had one question for talking about, I'm talking about, I can say what it was, but probably the amendments, or?
I guess we'll, we'll have to do an amendment on the next meeting.
I mean.
What's your recommendation?
Let me go back and try to find my email.
We have, we have been in contact with Chikey, we have the sole source letter, we have the bid. And so, we're all good as far as finance goes.
And they're just taking your old weapons?
As trade-in, yes. And the models that we're getting, we don't have to buy new holsters, so that saves us on that.
That was sitting there, right?
Yes.
I'll keep looking, hopefully by the time we use my recorder.
And I have, Patrol was going out and looking, and seeing those road signs, and then analyzed it, so they'll take pictures and and put a report in the system.
Okay, you're right. I, I, I had, I know you probably can't answer, but I need you to check it out. It's been a while, maybe a month or so, a little while, the project Nola camera that we had, I had asked Mr. Smith about, I think at like the ballpark and a couple of different areas that was checking on it, and everything just kinda, went kinda dead. I hadn't heard anymore on the cameras or what was going on, I knew it was having some thing with Nola and trying to get the other grant and cameras like that. And I definitely would like to, uh, Mr. Smith did move forward, where, you know, with it.
So the installers is who we've been waiting on, they've been coming up, they would do like a apartment complex on Friday and Saturday, then they'd come back and do another location. I don't think all the pole cams have gotten up, but I do know that a good number of cameras are up and operational. They provided us with username and passwords, and then they were talking about, I know there's discussions and meetings taking place to keep from losing the grant.
Yeah, yeah.
Past the city and I think Vidalia maybe.
But these was, these was the one that we approved at the board, and I think we added, if I'm not, if I'm correct to supervisor Gray, Country Club, you asked for a camera by Country Club, where they were dumping. And I asked the woman, we upgraded Bronmo Ballpark, because they had some in there, but because we did a nice upgrade and our parts, I wanted a camera, and he was checking on it, I knew we had something with about internet connection or whatever. And so he was totally give a price and check all of that, so if you would, just remind them of it, and I'd like an update on it.
Sure, no problem.
Alright.
And then the last thing I have is the garbage report. So District One, thirty-one bags, District Two, forty-eight, District Four, seventy-eight, and District Five, nine. I'll give those to you for signature.
Alright.
Oh, you had?
John, you had?
Yes, sir, I believe that's all that I.
Yeah, I had, I had something on about it, too. Strange, but I, I feel like if it happened to me, maybe, you know, it could be happening to other people, and somebody needs to look into it. I had somebody trespass on one of my properties. This was in the city limits, I turned in the police department, all the records vanished. Now, I had copies of the record, I talked to Cal about this. So then it, then it happened again, it was in the county, so the sheriff's office handled it, okay? The subpoenas went out for the court date, everything was fine. Well, then the, the person that got served, that did the trespassing, decided that I had too much power in county, so they wanted to change the judge, and attorney and everything, which we, that's fine. The problem is, that when they did that, they served her with a subpoena, but mine never came. And they shortened the court date up, it acted a week sooner than it's supposed to be. Well, I just happened to walk in the Verna's office, and she said, did you get your subpoenas? And I said, or summons? And I said, no, and called two other people, supposed to get them, they didn't get them either. So the court was set, for the four days later, no, no summons. What that meant was, that they were gonna show up for court and I wasn't, so therefore, the charges would have been dropped. Now, in, in this instance, it was a former county employee's daughter, and I think she still got a little clique going with somebody. It happened, I'm telling you, the police reports disappeared, and that's been completely. Okay, they still have them, luckily I got a copy of them, so I can prove it. But Verna calls your office, and nobody can find the summons that day. So she handed them to me, and then they, they went later and delivered them to the other people, with only three days notice, but it was okay. It got down, but if that kinda stuff can happen, you know, to somebody, that actually is in the public eye, that deal, what about the, you know, regular people out there, are, are, is the same thing happening to them too?
So the way that the subpoenas work is, Verna's office puts them out, they come to, as soon as they come to our office, they go to Keith's office over major miles, and then they are logged in onto a spreadsheet. So I've been doing those for, since he's been out for about two weeks. Deputies will then go serve them, once they're served, they're turned back in, so they're logged into our system. The day we receive them, they're logged in, and then the day they're served, it's logged, and then they're turned back into justice court. So I can look, literally, you give me five minutes, I will literally go look at the spreadsheet and tell you if we ever received any subpoenas in regards to whatever those names are.
The benefit I have with this is, I know if somebody comes to my driveway, and I know that they never came to my house. And they were, and Verna, when she called, she said, find those subpoenas or summonments, they did not find them. She had to reissue them to the sheriff's office, and I find that funny that it happened on the same case. I agree, it didn't access PD, and then it happened at the sheriff's office too. So everybody should know, in, in the justice system, that, you know, justice is blind, but, but nobody can be in the system and pulling, pulling things, and, and putting them, throwing them in the trash.
So if there is, and I can get with Verna, I've talked with Verna, two weeks ago, I went and talked to her about another, some other issues. If she can tell me the day that they were issued, and if they never made it to our system, that's not, that's not gonna be real hard to figure out. Because there's only one or two people from there to our office.
Exactly, so if that's the thing, I would.
If they made it to our office, they're logged in.
I just, I appreciate you looking into that, and letting me know what your thoughts are, because it's just like, I say, if it's gonna, if it's gonna happen to me, you know, and then people just walk on, on whatever it is they did, because they didn't show up for court. Because we never got summoned.
When was the court date that you were?
The reason it was supposed to be, uh, May the eighteenth, but it ended up being, I think the court date was on, or maybe it was the sixteenth, and it was the eighth that we actually went to court, because they changed.
May eighth, so it would have been somewhere between the sixteenth and, and May eighth?
Well, the first of May, we got the original summons, then they changed court date, and that's the one we didn't get.
The, the May eighth court date?
Yes.
Okay, so it had been sometime towards the end of April, first week of May, whenever the subpoenas should have come over.
Correct. And then, like I say, three, four days before that actual court date, Modi showed up to my yard with the, even though I had them in my hand already, Modi brought the ones from the sheriff's office, but they were, and they had been reprocessed, it was not the originals. But that, that's the thing that bothered me, is if somebody's supposed to be in court to testify and/or for a case, and they, they don't get it, then the defendant gets off, because it's just like, oh, they didn't show up.
So Modi brought you the subpoenas that got reissued?
Right.
Alright, I'll see if there's two sets in there then, and then I'll have a conversation with Verna about how exactly they get from justice court over to our office. Because that, not that many people would have their hands on it. Is there ain't anything else?
Thank you for what you're doing, alright, come to the table, I mean, fucking come here, there's fucking come here. There'll be no more fucking comments, come to the table.
Yes, I'm Mr. President, I, I, I'm not trying to repeat myself, but I think this is really important. And, uh, me personally, I just think, uh, we need to communicate better for as, uh, city, county, school, district, court system, or whatever the case may be. And I think if we communicate better and find some of these young folks that are going through some, uh, changes in our community, then, uh, we need to find a support system to, uh, help them out. A lot of people got problems, I got one in my family with a problem with, if the support system is not there with, with the mental health, with the drugs, with the guns, with everything we have available to these young people, then, then anything might happen. Mayor mentioned something about what can we do? And, uh, Shane, I know we getting cameras, but in the process of our deputies riding at night, and when they see a, a, a dark, dark area that a crime has been committed in the past, we need to lighten that area up. I mean, cameras are good, but if the area is so dark, you can't see nothing, then is the camera gonna be effective? I know I'm not in the city, but it's a whole lot of areas in the city that is dark and need to be lit up, and, uh, we need to address the abandoned houses, we need to address the lighting of these properties, because I, I just can't see no other way. I mean, it, it takes an optimal run to do something when you're on camera and, and it's lit up like that. And always, uh, I, I was kinda disturbed about the incident on Union Street when people went, went to assinuating that this individual was involved, this person's business was involved. And we need to be mindful and careful when we put information out there, and it's not true. Because you harm these people's businesses, so when you put information out there, and, and assuming that a business is is connected to a shooting, you need to have your facts in place, because if you don't, you're gonna ruin a business. Then you find out that, well, it's bigger than just that business, it's some people were shooting at each other, caused this whole thing to happen. But the damage is already done, so I'm just saying, in, in the near future, before we put something out there, let's deal with the facts, y'all. I have, uh, Mr. James, do you have that executive session that we need to talk to about the, uh, the guy that submitted you, whatever you need? Okay, thank you, and Robert, please take on your lead, lead the dunk. Last, I'm gonna have to talk to Carpet, I got my Bowler's Road, and I just need a list of individuals that been purged from the Bowler's Road, and I need a list of them, because it's getting to be too many people being purged from the Bowler's Road, and I need to find out, I don't know how y'all feeling in District Four, what can I do to give them back on the Bowler's Road? And last, my sympathy goes out to Singing family, the Clay family, the Griffin family, the King family, the Woods family. Y'all know that this is getting longer and longer, every meeting, we got some serious people dying in our community, and all kinds of. We got some serious people dying in our community, and all kinds of stuff. The Holmes family, the Winchester family, the Webb family, the King family. And, uh, I know y'all seen on the news where Judge Cooper Stokes died, that is Councilman Kenny Stokes' wife. And Mary Chapman family, and, uh, the Bradford family. And, uh, my sympathy goes out to, uh, Supervisor Gaines and his family. Uh, Bruh, I was trying to say we gonna be paying for Union family to, uh, get through this. And that concludes my report. Oh, I had to mention this, since I never had nobody in my family to, uh, make it to this level before I attended a graduation in New Orleans, and this young man graduated from Patrick L. Taylor Science and Technology Academy. And he says supposed to be the top of one of the top schools in the state of Louisiana. And the reason I brought this up, because this young man will be attending Yale. And I ain't never had nobody in my family to attend Yale before. I had to look off my mouth and find out where Yale was located. And, uh, congratulations goes out to him, and I'm just gonna say this in closing. They mentioned a whole lot of stuff at this school, I think maybe, uh, this community and other communities need to get on board. They still got the village approach. And they said at the meeting, they had all the students there that graduated, and most of all their parents showed up there too. But they say they have a connection with their class, where if anybody in the class needs some help or assistance from any parent, they there for them. Ain't never seen nothing like that before. Now, that used to go on back in the days, but that don't happen like that no more. So, we need to get back to the village approach, if you ask me, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
All right, Supervisor Mills.
Um, everything I have on my list, we covered here in the Departmental reports. But I would like to, uh, some have graduated, some are graduating next week or two. I just want to congratulate all our local seniors on a job well done. And, uh, don't forget where you came from, don't forget where you were raised, and don't forget to come back home. That's all I have.
Yeah, that seems to be a problem, getting them back home, that's what it go off, yes. Um, um, I want to thank Shane and the department for always, I call a lot, and I'll always take care of things. And I wanted to also give my condolences to you on your father-in-law. I didn't make the funeral, I was out of town. Um, and I would also thank Robbie as well, and your department. Every time I call you, I mean, people are like, "Wow, you got that done quick." And I get all the praise, and y'all do all the work, you know? And, uh, thank y'all for always doing that, and taking those chewing outs too, that most of the time you do not deserve. But, uh, uh, and that concludes my report.
All right, Justice Kirk, say it again. Uh, the Minister of Justice.
Um, okay, I have a couple of things. I did look back, Shane, I just had to, there was one fund that I had a question mark on, but I think I've got that fixed. So, um, the request was a transfer from their receipt fund, where I did get confirmation from Footkeeping, transfer from O three O dash O O O dash two three eight to O three O dash two two one dash six one three for the purchase of the, uh, the blocks, so.
You heard the request?
For Shane, what's that?
Yes, I'm gonna submit the transfer request to Footkeeping today.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So we need a motion for that?
Yes.
So, you gonna be the administrator of the Chancellor of Publicity, that's me, right there, right? We gonna have to, uh, you heard the request of the Administrator? Uh, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Milton, properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Will there be any discussion? There be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you to sign, aye. Aye. Interposed, may have had the same right, motion carried, all right?
I can get all the administration, by the way, okay. Uh, so, the board had already approved a budget amendment for our Chancery judges, but Judge Davis had not yet hired his, um, law clerk. And we do have an order from the judge within the budget amendment request we already approved to hire Lakin Dunn as his, uh, law clerk. So you just need to have this spread across the minutes.
All right, you heard the request of the Chancellor of Publicity, Administrator, right now, so. You heard the request, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, properly seconded by Supervisor Milton. Uh, will there be any discussion? All in favor, vote by you to sign, aye. Interposed, may have had the same right.
Mr. President, do we have a amount on that?
That's what the judge, I don't refuse on that, so yeah.
Thirty-nine thousand, one sixty-five.
Thirty-nine thousand, one sixty-five.
And that is, those are listed here, were set by OC.
Yeah.
I have a request, this is just inter fund, moving of money within the Ray Department. There are about ten, if the board would like for me to go through them, well, I can. It's just moving money within their own budget, all from, or for funds one fifty and funds one sixty. We just need to have that agreed and spread across the minutes.
You heard the request, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, can I get a second? Properly seconded by Supervisor Milton. There be any discussion, if there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you to sign, aye. Interposed, may have had the same right, motion carried, now.
We have another request for modification from Core Civic. You know, just a third party today, but we do have to have those approved for the president to sign off on, that's just an internal modification on Core Civic side.
All right, you heard the request of the Chancellor of Publicity, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, can I get a second? Properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. There be any discussion, if there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you to sign, aye. Interposed, may have had the same right, motion carried, now.
Okay, um, the circuit judges made, as they already did, so they made some modifications to the county handbook. We've always referred those across the minutes, so that they are a public record. Um, Judge Blackwell and Judge Drake, they've signed up on these, just some minor modifications to the handbook, but we do need to spread it across the minutes.
What handbook, is their handbook?
So they've adopted the county handbook with a few modifications, and I can list those out, I'll go left for them too.
Well, what I'm asking is, they made modifications to our handbook?
Yes, sir.
And what else to do what?
To authorize those and move that across the minutes, that way if there's...
Well, I need, uh, me, I need to get a copy open and read open, before I...
You're not authorizing them, you're simply recording on the minutes that they done this. It's their prerogative, as they were elected officials. Um, and this is pretty common, that they'll accept most of our things in the handbook and change one or two things. And I think that's what they did in this one.
Yeah, it's just, uh, some small tweaks to do, the initial briefs is reported here, if there's any issue within our department, and I think that's pretty much it.
So that's gonna be a part of our handbook?
It's a part of their employees', their policies on their employees only. They accept our policies that we do for their employees, except they're changing it a little bit.
For them, for them, not all our...
I didn't understand, I did it first.
Yeah, so, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, can I get a second? Properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. All in favor, vote by you to sign, aye. Interposed, may have had the same right, motion carried, now.
I need to have the April tax redemptions on Chancery Park's office spread across the minutes.
You heard the request of the Chancellor of Publicity? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, and it's been properly seconded by Supervisor Milton. Will there be any discussion?
That was a full second.
All in favor, vote by you to sign, aye. Interposed, may have had the same right.
Uh, we have the mail tracking report that needs to be spread across the minutes for April for the Attorney Sheriff's Office.
You heard the request of the Chancellor of Publicity? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Be in discussion, if there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you to sign, aye. Interposed, may have the same right.
Uh, we also have the certificates of training for all of the, um, election commissioners. We get those annually, and have to have those spread across the minutes, so you just need to get a motion to do that.
You heard the request of the Chancellor of Publicity? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. There be any discussion, if there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you to sign, aye. Interposed, may have had the same right, motion carried, now.
Okay, um, the board authorized, uh, the Chancery Park's office to forward only some objections with regard to homestead disallowances. Um, we did receive responses back, all of those that we submitted. Uh, the Department of Revenue said that they could not reverse the disallowance because, um, the state income taxes have not been filed for all four of them. Um, so we just need to, please have this spread across the minutes, and we will submit a copy of this letter to the property owners to let them know that the board did send it, but that we got a secondary response back from the state.
All right. You heard the request of the Chancellor of Publicity? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. There be any discussion, if there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you to sign, aye. Interposed, may have had the same right, motion carried.
Uh, this is just a reminder for the board, um, N D Q did send this letter a little while back, concerning needing to have someone to fulfill the previous role that Robbie had with the St. Catherine utility authority. Our application due date is September, so just need to make sure to have somebody in place in advance of that to get that work done, so.
All right.
And did y'all receive my email in regards to the premium cost of insurance on St. Catherine Pre?
Yeah, oh, did we shop that around? Should we?
So, I think you're bringing it to Q.
Yeah.
We shop around, next time we shop around, our insurance is a hole.
Uh, the hammer, but they did suggest proposals, I just had a reminder to get those approved. That's all, thank you.
All right, uh, turn us down slow.
Got a couple of items to be determined, and I've seen this too.
The Cal.
During, I guess, Georgia's report, and what.
All right, yes, take it.
Yep.
All right. Uh, I have a letter from Miss Esther, Esther Perry. She's with the Sixth Judicial Intervention Court. Uh, so she's requesting to take the place of, uh, Ms. Flavers Wyler, uh, so she could be authorized, uh, named as an entity administrator for the grant.
About that, Joe Belling.
Yes.
Uh, what do you, do they have something to do with us? Do we make that decision?
I thought that was Joe Belling, I think that was doing that.
I got this, this call, yes.
That's a position he got.
They asking for her to be named as an administrator.
She's asking, or somebody else is asking.
She is.
That ain't our calling, Mrs. Scott.
Looks like they want something on our letterhead signing, authorizing that.
Who?
Um...
Hey, Esther Perry.
Ms. Perry.
This was in a whole phone.
I thought I did hear him say that it was authorized for her to be...
Yeah, I've seen this before, them asking for something on the county letterhead, just saying that the modification can be done, but I hope Joe Belling is in that position, I'm sure.
Well, let me ask this important question, let me ask this important question. Uh, who over there make the decision on who have that position? Because I know it's not the county board supervisor.
The judges do.
Okay, well, until we get something from the judge, then we need to...
So if we get something from the judge, does it, find out from the judge of what we got going on? All right, I got a request, this is coming from the Road Department, uh, funds that we will receive, uh, requesting funds from Mr., uh, Grant from, uh, Meg. It's seven thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and four cents, and four, yeah, four and three cents. I need a, uh, permission to sign this up. Can I get a motion?
Uh, the DQ or the tire grant?
Uh, that's the same tire grant that they had.
Yeah.
That time.
So, ladies.
Sorry. Little easy, didn't it?
Okay, I just... Go tense with you. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson and seconded by Supervisor Nelson. Uh, there be any discussion, all in favor, vote by you to sign, aye. Interposed, may have had the same right, motion carried, you know. All right, uh, uh, this is a request from Clementine Lewis, I mean, she goes on the conference, the travel to the conference in the Luxon, uh, June the fifteenth, I mean, twelfth through the fifteenth. Uh, can I get a motion?
No move.
She don't, she don't want to go.
No, she been going.
Ah, but she don't want to go.
Yeah, 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 she don't want to. Uh, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. There be any discussion, if there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you to sign, aye. Interposed, may have had the same right. Uh, I need a request for travel for, uh, Judge, Judge, uh, Drake. This is the N A D C P RISE Conference, uh, in Houston, Texas.
We are that.
We did it?
Yeah, you just need to sign for that to work. But we've done that a long time ago, yeah.
I think we did, but she didn't need to sign.
Well, they're back in their phones, so I just be safe, to make sure. Either do it twice and do it another time, or not. All right, then, I'll make sure to pick a phone. Yeah, well, I got just a couple things, uh, for the board, information, um, me. I mean, you know, I haven't been moving around because of the traffic, but we had, uh, some contractors out at the arena on Saturday, and so I got a couple cars to go over, they was moving. It was a conflict in scheduling, they thought it was gonna be a rodeo on, only on Sunday, not on Saturday. But they had their first, uh, youth rodeo out there. And, uh, on the road, man, Robbie had all his kids, and I mean, I think, what was it, a hundred, a hundred and fifty people?
Probably so, it was a big turnout, it was a real good turnout, uh, for the first youth rodeo in the long time of Adams County.
And...
Uh, it was, it was nice, it was, a lot of people, hot. It was eight o'clock before the kid got, before we left, before the kid got there, before the grumbers started. And it was a good turnout, it was nice, uh, it continued. Uh, I said it was shared present that night, it wasn't anything today, but that night before we left, they were there, today they're pretty, two different ones, so. It was a good turnout. My kids was very lucky, I had one kid win the six and under champion buckle, I had one win the seven and nine champion buckle, so, uh, my kids showed up, showed out there.
And, you know, I just bring, bring it to the board attention. Uh, we might not realize how much that that arena is used. That arena is used practically every single day. And what I love about it is not one, uh, set of people, it's a mixture of everybody. And, you know, it has been a great asset to use. If you would see how many young kids run by, or, I mean, you know, I was amazed. I didn't get to stay for fifteen, twenty minutes, but I was taking care of business, and, uh, but it was amazing, and that's what, uh, is for our youth to grow. Of course, it's for grown folks, but, uh, just to see our youth enjoy and mingle like this. We had people all from Louisiana, all over coming to that, so the facility was, hopefully, our completion would look good. And so I just thank the board for all the things that we did for our parks and recreation. And, uh, so that's one of the things that want to come up, uh, I think I got one. Okay, this is a, uh, it's a state and local disaster system agreement. Uh, this is, uh, from Miss Bree Cooks. It's just a loud, mean-to-be-able sign disagreement, because the last time I was up there, it was us, President Gray.
Something, something...
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray.
A long time.
And, can I get a second?
Second.
Properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. And, uh, any discussion, all in favor, vote by you to sign, aye. Interposed, may have had the same right. But, uh, on a note, you know, it's good to be here. Uh, my nephew was one of the ones that killed in the shooting, and I tell you, I really wouldn't want, uh, that's why we push to, uh, Project Nola and things like that. And you'll never know how your heart bleed like that. I really wouldn't want another family to experience the hurt and the pain that we actually going through at this moment right now. So, you know, it was, uh, sometimes it's hard to do, come up and do business, but a- as a man, we have to come up and take care of these positions like that. But I ask that you keep our family in prayer, because I tell you, this is... But I ask that you keep our family in prayer, because I tell you, this is a really difficult time. I honestly think that it is more difficult having to see that situation, and in that situation, when I lost my mom, and I thought wouldn't nothing hurt like losing my mom. But this is a terrible painful situation, and we don't know the answer, but as a community, I heard Supervisor Gray said, as a village, we try to raise, uh, our families, and, but you just never know what happened, so, uh, I do, do appreciate the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, uh, everybody has been working hard, and, uh, not only just because we are victim right now, but there's been so many victims dead, and I wish as a community that we don't know the answer, but we can come together and work on, and that concludes my report.
Mr. President, um, you know, Supervisor Wilson wasn't here, but we did interview for the, uh, uh, what is that? Kind of administrative position, and, uh, I'm just looking at this calendar, and this is the calendar that we usually go by. I think we adopted this, we in May, and it say, form a budget policy, and, and the second in May say, develop financial forecast. Now, that's May, and next month will be June, uh, the State Department here is requesting from the Sheriff and the Tax Assessor and Collective, so I don't know what we gonna do. And whoever get that job, I'm praying for them, because you coming into a, a, a position like that during the time where you got to do a budget, that ain't no easy time to be getting no job, I can tell you that right now, so. I don't, I don't know what we go from here.
All right, if that being out, can I get a motion?
No move.
Proposal termination? Uh, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, can I get it properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson? All right, discussion?
Have something to take into consideration, I guess, if it qualifies.
Okay, okay, all right, uh, can I get, uh, all in favor, vote by you to sign a aye? In a poll, may they have the same right, motion carry, now.